S.
Welcome, everybody, to this council meeting on Tuesday, October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three for our afternoon agenda. Go ahead and call the meeting to order, passing it to Clementine for roll call and announcements about how the public can participate in public comment.
Councilmember Barbara, President, Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Hafa.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
President.
And Mayor Williamson.
Here.
And for the safe attendance of our public meetings, wearing a mask is recommended and encouraged in the chamber. Please keep your phones and devices in the chamber muted to prevent audio interference with the meeting. And there are two ways to participate remotely in today's meeting. You may join us using the Zoom app on your computer or mobile device, and you can also call into the Zoom meeting. To join the meeting on Zoom on your computer, smartphone, or telephone, use the link or phone number on the agenda at iSearchMonterey.org. An up-to-date version of Zoom software must be used. To call in by telephone, dial toll-free eight three three five six eight 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 six four, then enter meeting ID one six zero seven seven two nine three 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 pound. And if prompted to enter participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions on using and updating Zoom are available at Monterey.org-publicmeetings. To make a public comment using the Zoom app, you can virtually raise your hand by pressing the Raise Hand button at the bottom of your screen. Or if you dialed in by phone, raise your hand by dialing star nine and then unmute yourself when called upon by dialing star six. You must do both. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak. Please stay within the time limit established for today's meeting, and a countdown timer will be shown on the screen. If you're connected live on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. And today's meeting is also streamed live on the city's YouTube account at youtube.com/cityofmonterey with about ten seconds delay. And on Comcast Channel twenty-five with up to ninety seconds delay. And as always, we look forward to receiving public comments.
Thank you, Clementine.
Oh.
With that, we will go to public comments for matters not on today's agenda. Um. I'm going to pass it back to Clementine to read the procedures for speaking on public comments for items not on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the mayor will request that persons wishing to line, wishing to speak, line up at the podium, raise their hands, or use dot star nine on the telephone or the Raise Hand function in Zoom. To determine the number of persons interested in speaking on non-agendized matters. The amount of time for public comment on non-agendized matters will be determined based on the number of persons interested in speaking. The maximum time allotted is thirty minutes. In exceptional circumstances and when necessary to ensure full opportunity for public input, the mayor may, with the city council's consent, adjust the amount of time allowed for public input and/or the time allotted for each speaker.
Perfect. Thank you, Clementine. And just to clarify the thirty. Just to clarify the thirty minutes, that's for the entire public comment period. It's not for per person. So she was correct in identifying thirty minutes. Um, so I'm going to ask for those that are in the chamber that wish to speak on public items that are not on this, on today's agenda. To either identify yourself by standing or raising your hand if you're in the chamber. So this is for public comment for things that aren't on the agenda. So I saw some hands up over here. Can I just see a show of hands again for those that aren't already standing? Am I missing any hands? Does anybody see any hands? I think I can't see. Okay. All right. So we have the five of you, the two here and the three standing up back here. All right. And then for those that are on Zoom, if you can use the Raise Hand function. Staff's going to capture everybody right now who's identified as wanting to speak on public comments for items not on this, on today's agenda. And we're going to go ahead and close that in five, four, three, two, one. All right. So we have everybody that's going to speak on items that are not on today's agenda. And sir, we'll go ahead and start with you.
My name is Chandler Rowland. I'm a Marina resident. My subject is the MST Project Surf Program whereby two express bus lanes will be built from the Marina Transit Station, destroying six miles of environmental landscape and recreational activities to the, to the San City Transit Station. The MST General Manager indicates in a September seventh, two thousand and twenty-three email to me that MST does not report data regarding the passenger ridership totals for the existing Route twenty express trips between these two transit stations. In the two thousand and twenty-two MST Annual Report, MST staff sponsored over ninety gatherings for public feedback on the surf program, but the same MST organization is unable to survey passenger ridership totals between these two transit stations. The cost would be, would be zero because MST bus drivers could possibly gather and record the information. My informal biased survey through recent passengers using the Route twenty express trips between these transit stations indicates an average of three passengers for each forty-seat bus trip. Yet MST states they expect eight hundred and eighty thousand riders a year will use the newly completed Surf Express bus lanes. MST once again misleads Monterey citizens and city council members on the questionable benefits of this possible one hundred million dollar taxpayer project.
Good afternoon. Steve Lightfoot here of LennonMurderTruth.com. This is my latest Pearl of Wisdom here. I put it on the back of my van. Are you too stupid to care? Most people are about my John Lennon story, you know. Get smart. You know, I'm always bitching at how stupid the world is. But I'm not a hero. I'm just doing what normal people would do if they weren't bootlicking turncoat cowards. So I'm always ragging on how stupid everybody is and how gutless everybody is and how I'm not a hero. And I still feel that way, and I always will. Stephen King becappitated you when he killed John Lennon, took away your tongue, your voice, made you stupid. Speaking of Israel. The day of retaliation, they took down two high-rises like demolition style. One in the middle stayed standing. There's no way rockets could do that kind of precision straight down demolition. So Israel thinks they have a right to live there and yet rewire their enemies' buildings if they get out of line to show them. One to a thousand. That's what they want. It's called getting your goat. And this is a terrible from the Middle East. Where a man can only get away with killing his neighbor if he tricks him into trying to steal his goat on a post. He dates him out there. Oh, well, yeah, everyone wants that goat milk and those good tender loins. Yeah. So when he succumbs to human nature and tries to get the goat, his, his, his neighbor, enemy kills him, says, hey, he got, he was trying to get my goat. That's exactly what we're seeing in the Middle East. And if you guys were brave and if you were truthful and if you, you did give a goddamn if Stephen King killed John Lennon or not. You know, I would be famous. And if I was famous, I would definitely tell the world, like I've been doing on talk radio, that no religion, no race of people is entitled to any land anywhere on the planet. I'm going to put Vatican City on a hot plate now with having said that. They're probably illegitimate, too. We put them there out of collective guilt after we sat by and watched Hitler try to extinguish them. Gave them their own homeland. Big mistake. Concentrating the Jews is the exact opposite of what we need in this world. They interbreed only with themselves, basically. They only really do business favors for people who are like them, basically. And that's why they get such a bad rap. Why they had to go through the diaspora. Run out of where they came from. You would think while they were out there wandering around in the world in Europe, that they would, they would introduce their, their genetic code to the rest of us. But no, no. And now we find themselves painted in the corner and wonder why.
Uh, Mayor Council, my name is Nelson Vega, and I just want to bring your attention to, um, um, a new ordinance, I mean, a new law that the, um, the, the governor signed about allowing homeowners to sell ADUs. I think this is an opportunity that really, um, uh, would be helpful here to allow people to build ADUs and sell them and make homeownership a, a bigger, uh, pool. I think that in this city, having sixty-five percent renters has really, uh, up, upset the apple cart considerably. And to get more home, more ownership. The fact that if you didn't have to have these deed restrictions, which I won't sign that deed restriction, and I have seven possibilities in Monterey, as I've told you. If you would follow this guideline, which is voluntary on every city, apparently, but it's a way to, uh, get rid of the AD, uh, the deed restriction. Because the law says it can be allowed. Now, you have the, you're probably going to get the final say in every city, but it would be helpful in creating more housing. And my understanding is that your mission is to create more housing. And therefore, it might be something that you might want to reconsider and, um, get rid of the deed restrictions for the ADU because all those things are covered by the existing ordinances and it's unnecessary. I hope you look on it positively. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, City Council, uh, but, uh, is this the correct time to talk about the rental registration? Okay, thank you. Okay. So nobody else in the chamber will go online.
So I'm calling on Mr. Rossello.
And I'll just reiterate, for those that are online, this is for public comments for items not on today's agenda. That includes the rental registry.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, Richard Rossello. Uh, just two small comments. I was driving on the Salinas Highway Sunday. And it was heavy traffic. Um, pretty much bumper to bumper going about sixty miles an hour when I saw a bike rider right beside the road. Now, that bike lane is about three feet wide. It's a white line in the street. And I've been reading about all the pedestrian fatalities and bike fatalities in this county. And I seem to be the only one concerned with getting separated bike paths. But uh, I'm working on my second one right now, but I'm just worried that other people need to get involved because we can't call them bike lanes when there are peanut lying next to the street. Let's call them what they are, suicide lanes. I don't want to see any more fatalities. We need to get bike riders and pedestrians off busy streets and get them protection. And I'm asking for anybody in our twenty-eight thousand people to pick up the flag and carry it. I've been carrying it by myself. So that's the point I want to make. The other is Kona and Restoration of City Services. Uh, we've had the bookmobile here three months. I have volunteered many times to get our volunteers to pass flyers out to every house in the neighborhood. Not association members, every house. Uh, I need three hundred flyers. Nobody will give it to me. I've talked to their board, the library director, and many other people. We're also having limited programs at the center. One of them is on a Halloween party. No flyers. I, I, I'm really worried that we're planning for failure here. We need a definite marketing. We haven't had these services for four years out here. And we cannot expect people to read the city email that comes out. Very few do. We're willing to take the flag and carry it and advertise it. But we have, what I'm afraid, is planning for failure to show there's no, uh, uh, demand out here when it's wrong. So, uh, I'm not going to talk any louder. I do thank you for your time. Good afternoon.
Thank you. And next is Esther.
Good afternoon, everybody. Esther Malkin, President of the Laguna Grande Neighborhood Association. President. And I wanted to thank the mayor and Congress member, sorry, council member, uh, Gino Garcia for attending our first annual neighborhood picnic. It was really well attended, especially for a first time. I also want to thank the police department and the fire department for attending as well. It makes a big difference when the residents of the city can interact with all of those departments as well as directly with our mayor and council member. Um, I wanted to thank the staff, the park staff, for working on the park and getting it, um, in pretty good shape. I'm hoping that they will be able to maintain it now instead of having to be reactive to get into a more proactive, uh, schedule. And I particularly wanted to thank, um, park staff, um, Santos. Oh, gosh, I can't remember. Scardini, I think is his name. He is such a conscientious city employee that I, I just wanted to suggest that he be the one to train everybody in the parks department because he really cares about his job and he does it in a way that is so genuine and I'm sure that, you know, any job that he had, he would treat the same. But given the problems that we've had with, with at least one particular staffer in the parks department. I think that future employees that are hired, if they start out with a work ethic and the training that somebody like, like Santo would give, you would have a lot less complaints from residents and and the parks would just be much more well-maintained and probably used more as well. So I also want to thank the, um, Regional Parks District for attending with us and, um, you know, talking to the residents of, of what they would like to see happen. In addition to, uh, the Autobahn Society, um, Representative Amanda Priest. It was a really, you know, collective of a lot of people who care about this park. And I'm hoping that we will see some movement finally from the JPA. You know, we're sitting around saying we're waiting for permits, but while we're waiting for permits, there are other things that we can be doing. For example, we need bike racks. We had a number of people that rode their bikes to the picnic and we had nowhere for them to put them. So again, thank you to everybody who attended. It was really appreciated and hopefully we'll have more events like this in our neighborhood in the near future. Good afternoon.
Uh, thank you. There are no further comments online at this time.
Thank you, Clementine. And thank you for those who shared during public comment. We'll now move on to the consent agenda. There's been a request to pull item number four. Does the council desire to pull, pull anything else from the consent?
Number five.
Okay, pull number five. Anything else? All right. We will take it out to the public for public comment on the consent, other than item number four and number five. Anybody in the chamber wish to speak on this item? Please identify yourself by standing or raising your hand. All right, seeing none, let's check online. I'll do a countdown. Please use the Raise Hand function, and we'll capture everybody that is interested in speaking on public comments for items on today's consent agenda, other than item number four and number five. Number four is the rental registry and number five is regarding reallocation of capital improvement program budget, uh, project budget. Um, so other than those items. We'll count down from five, four, three, two, one. All right, we've captured those folks and we'll pass it to Clementine to run through the folks that want to speak on the consent agenda.
Yes, I'm calling on a telephone caller. Please go ahead.
Yes, this is Nina Beatty. I just wanted to confirm that item number five is about the funds for, uh, the, uh, fuel reduction and tree removal program. Is that correct?
It is correct.
Okay, then I don't have any further comments until we get to that item.
And we don't have any other comments on Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we'll bring it back to the council for motion deliberation.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda minus items four and five.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to item number four, which is the second reading of the rental registry, and we'll pass it to Hans for staff presentation.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor Council. This is, uh, the second, second reading of the ordinance. Uh, the ordinance, uh, was, uh, reviewed on September twenty-third. Uh, you asked that, uh, four items will be added to the ordinance, which you see on package page twenty-four. Uh, we did this. And so with that, the ordinance is ready to be reviewed for a third time.
Perfect. Thank you, staff. Thank you, staff. He was, all right. So I'll just reiterate, he was just identifying that there's this, there's the staff report in the packet. Uh, basically, we're on our third presentation of the rental registry based off of the last conversation. And that's where we're at right now. So we'll bring it to the council for discussion. Any questions to staff?
Uh, I'm ready to hear from the public.
Okay. Councilmember Smith, do you have any questions on this one before we go to the public for public comment?
Um, what I wanted to do is have just your brief, uh, presentation because there's a variety of projects that are contained in this. I think that have a lot of, uh,
with the rental registry.
I, I am four. I'm sorry. I'm ahead. And that's five. Uh, item four.
Uh, do you have any questions at this time?
I don't have any questions. Uh, I want to hear from the public on the item. And I know it's the third time, so we want to we want to put a closure on this. So I'd like to hear the public first.
Awesome. Okay, with that, we will take it out to the public. So for those that wish to speak on this item, whether in the chamber or online, please identify yourself by raising your hand or standing. And we'll capture those that wish to speak this item. So this is the rental registry. So if you're here to speak on this item, please identify yourself by raising your hand or standing. So we have one, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, all right. Please raise your hand if you wish to speak on this item. I, I need to identify you. So we have two, four, five over here and three over here. All right. So we have eight in the chamber. All right. How many do we have online?
Three.
All right. So I'm going to go ahead and do this one more time. I'm going to count down for those online. Use the Raise Hand function. I'm going to count down for those online, use the raise hand function. Five, four, three, two, one. We still have three. All right, can we just get a show of hands again, one more time in the chamber, just to make sure I have everybody? Two, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. So now we have nine. Okay, all right, so that's it. So I want to go ahead and start in the chamber. So those nine in the chamber, if you wish to stand up. And you can go ahead and start with public comment. So nine, 10, 11, 12, 12. Okay, we're 36. Okay, that's a half hour. It's 36, three. Okay, who's standing up right now that didn't raise their hand? We, we've already, so if you, the exercise that we just did, where we asked everybody to raise their hand, if you didn't raise your hand, the public comment has been closed for anybody else to speak. All right, all right, okay, okay. Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. We have a process, we laid it out, we've communicated that. Okay, and it was iterated a couple of times. And I gave everybody several times to raise their hand to be identified. I understand that this is new and everybody's trying to understand it. So we'll go ahead and allow the folks that are standing in the chamber to speak. But that's it, nobody else is speaking in the chamber, all right? And we're going to limit it to two minutes because we don't have, we have until 5:30 to get, excuse me? And we have until 5:30 to get through tonight's meeting. So we'll go ahead and start in the chamber and go ahead and speak your public comment.
Mayor, Council, I just, I just read through this agenda packet that came out over the weekend. And I understand that you guys have a obligation, I mean, a desire to have this rental registry. So in keeping with that and trying to be collegial and things, I would just like to see if you can change one item. You have put your fingers on item, the tenant may enforce the provisions. There should be at least a notice from the tenant that we have violated something. They should be able to give us at least 60 day notice saying, hey, you didn't do this correctly, please correct the record with the city registry before you can, they can just march to court. This is, this here, first of all, you're putting the thumb on the tenant's side. They shouldn't even be allowed to file a lawsuit. The only people that should be a filed lawsuit is the city attorney after she's addressed it with us. And if we aren't complying with how, what the law says, we, she should be allowed to take that. But we should not be giving that power to a tenant, no more than you would give that power to a landlord. So I asked you to remove that provision because the landlord is always said to shall comply. And he, and they have the power to tell the city, the city attorney to file a lawsuit to get us in compliance. I respectfully think that this really shows where you're headed to. And I want you to be fair to the landlords because you already have a battle with us. And I'm hoping that our heads will prevail eventually on this thing because you're going down a rabbit hole with this. But this one is really outrageous to have a tenant come in there without even a notice. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, my name is Joe Williams. I'm a mom and pop property owner here in Monterey. And whatever decision you make on this, and personally, I'm against this ordinance. But when you do consider it, just because someone owns a rental property, it doesn't mean they're making money. Now, my family's been here since the 1930s. And love Monterey, love the peninsula. I inherited this property from my parents. And had to split the equity equally with my sister. And that's left me a large mortgage. And you know, that's where the key is here. Because I was able to get my mortgage at a really good rate. But when I refinance, if I refinance today at today's rates, I'm paying another $2,000 a month. And I can't raise the rate rents without being overpriced and having the permits go empty. So I'm trying to keep the cost down. And this ordinance only pushes the costs up. And it doesn't end well for me because I end up running in the red. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. My name is Adam Pinteritz. I'm the Government and Community Affairs Director for the Monterey County Association of Realtors. I'm also a renter who's deeply concerned about how this will affect me and other renters. But that aside, I'd like to reference a few things that were mentioned previously on this subject. If you look at the AMP timestamp, two hours and 18 minutes, I'm very grateful that your consulting attorney Mazenin mentioned quotes that this is an either or situation in terms of whether or not it's the land, the property owner or the property manager who registers the unit. That was not my reading of the ordinance. But I feel that that would be a really important clarification to make. I think it should be either or. So I would appreciate addressing that, please. Furthermore, and more concerning, at timestamp two hours and 29 minutes, and there was a motion made to add to Mr. Vega's point, a 30 day notice required. And for, before a tenant can take civil action. And I can't help notice that despite the fact that that motion was accepted, or that amendment was accepted and voted on four to one, that it is not reflected in the draft ordinance. So I would ask for that correction to section eight dash 2.05E. That, that, that this body did in fact decide that a notice should be required. And that is not reflected in the, in the ordinance language as it stands right now. So I would appreciate those cleanups and corrections, thank you.
Hey, Adam, could you reiterate the section of the ordinance?
Section eight dash 2.05E.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Kathy Anderson, a homeowner. And this week I had to do some improvements to my rentals. It cost me a few hundred dollars. And I'm not the one to go raise the rent because I had to put something in the kitty. I'm really disappointed in this whole process. I figure that four people on this diocese wants to go forward with this register. And you've had every organization come up and homeowners and people that have worked hard and asked not for another layer of government on our properties. And it doesn't even faze you. And it's very disappointing, and that's what I would like to share tonight.
Hello, I'm Richard Bernard. There's no denying that the reason to enact a rental registry is to eventually impose rent control. It's been discussed in previous meetings. So it's not an opinion. While we appreciate the city council wishes to bring some relief to renters, there's also no denying that the decades of evidence that government imposed rent controls will only make things worse for all but a very, very few renters. And these are also facts. To his credit, Mr. Smith has been a voice of reason during this process. But the rest of you, including city manager and legal counsel, seem determined to enact the registry ordinance despite the facts that have been continually put before you and despite widespread opposition from your local residents. If you move forward, know that the ordinance will continue to face opposition from the public. Also know that once rent control is put in place, it will negatively affect your whole city, making it a less attractive place in which to live, to work, and to invest. The facts also show that this ordinance will bring costs in the millions. Because we've seen it in other cities. We're asking city council one last time to scrap the ordinance for a rental registry. Go back to the drawing board and look for other ways to benefit renters as a whole. Other cities are attempting this, such as Santa Barbara. Or else just get out of the way and let the renters and the owners figure out what works best for them. It's a mutual exchange, it's a beneficial exchange, and they usually are able to figure it out somehow. Thank you.
I'm Lawrence Samuel, okay, Sam is my pen name. I wrote young history, the false left, white political spectrum started out back in 1970 when I was in college. Anyway, what you're doing here is you're scapegoating. What you're saying is the landlords are responsible for the high rents, not inflation that's gone trillions of dollars of paper money that's just, what, last year, what, 9%? It was much more than that. What you're saying is that that we are, the landlords are responsible for this problem. Now scapegoating, scapegoating is very popular in the past. I studied the 30s and 40s of Italy, Russia, and Germany. And they hated the landlords. They put in rent control in 1933 and it didn't end even after the third riot had ended. And most of those times, they tried to destroy them. The landlords. Now, the people in Germany, they had a name for these landlords and capitalists. They call them Jewish capitalists. And they blamed the Jews and the capitalists for their poor economy. Germany, yes, was starting to fall apart before the war began. One reason why they plundered most of the countries next to them. Anyway, what you're doing is you're blaming the landlords for inflation, but the government caused. You're blaming them because our local governments didn't build any housing. So we must be responsible for inflation. Hey, I didn't know that. You're scapegoating. You're just like the people back in Germany. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Kathy. I can't speak off the cuff, so I sit at home and I write something out. And I thought I had three minutes to do it. Don't know if I can condense it to two, so that's pretty unfair. But I've lived here 73 years, probably been a property owner landlord for 50 of those years. We're all here to watch guys other than Mr. Smith pass this registry. You've really pitted landlords against tenants. But I'll tell you what, my tenants are not in favor of this. And if you pass it and we sell out, they're all going to have some very high rents. And I told you that before. So at the last meeting, the mayor said, you know, he talked with somebody and they had a leaky roof. I don't see that's the reason to have a rent registry. There's other, other methods to address that, and there certainly isn't one of them. And you guys have not told us how you're going to do that within that $400,000 budget. And when Councilman Hoffa, you said, well, you should, you should be able to know what the rents are because CVS advertises their rents or their, the price of their food. My rent contract is, is a legal contract between me and my tenant. And I do advertise the rents, they're on ZLO, they're on apartments.com. But that contract is between me and my tenant, and I don't think it's anybody's business. And you've been demonstrated that once that goes into that rent registry, I think it's Culver City, that it went out there to everybody. So I, I'm really adamant about that. That's my legal contract. I don't think it's anybody's business. And as for the fact that you guys think it should be, oh, I forgot how Dr. Barber faced it. It was something about a snapshot. There's a way, and Mr. Smith told you there's a way to get a snapshot for $50,000. I don't think you need to intrude on our business.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Shar Carter. This is probably my fourth time up here. And the reason I'm here is because I don't like the way you're spending my money and all these people's tax dollars on this ridiculous, unnecessary program that has been proven in Seattle and other places not to work. I don't know why you're doing this, the four of you up here. I, I, okay, $100,000 to start, 25 grand for the software, $50,000 for the subscription, $400,000 a year, which is a lie. Because I found out in Berkeley that they started a teeny weeny little, you know, gradualism, right? And they have now 27 employees and they're spending $7 million a year in Berkeley rental registry. So what you're telling us initially is false. I, I want you to scrap the whole thing. I don't like the way you're spending their money, my money, on something so unnecessary. We have lived here in this, I have lived here 40 years. This town has been here 300 years. And we've been great without this. So let me see. Oh, and people, I want to tell you, I know a whole bunch of people that are selling their properties. They're, they have rent houses and apartments. And another thing, you think you're telling us that we have no business if you have a room rental. And then you have a fee, and the fee's going to be X number of dollars. But you're going to creep and creep and creep and creep, just like they did in Berkeley. And that creeping increase is going to be transferred to rental, to the renters. And that, and I'm all for the renters too. Amen, bye.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Alan Rosenthal. I've lived here over 32 years in this beautiful community. It is absolutely essential that when these decisions are made, people voted for you all to take these positions you sit in today. And the public has the right to know the objective evidence associated with what we call this type of registry. If they don't understand what the pros and cons are, which you just have heard, it is an unfair way to look at politics. It is a unilateral democracy. It's not a universal democracy where we all have the chance to vote on this. And I think in fairness, the way this should be handled, no matter what you believe right now, and I believe if you all voted right now, it will not change for you all. The public has a right to be also in the zone of information so they can make a justified decision on this particular rental registry. And then you will know for sure what the answer really is for you all. Because it goes beyond those who voted for you. And they are allowed to do what they should be able to do is to vote on this. So they have a chance to do what the public needs, not later on when we're going to be very costly to everybody, including you all. And I think it's really an unfair situation. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. I'm Jeff Gorman. I'm the chairman of the Monterey County Republican Party, but I'm also a renter here in Monterey. One guy with some experience. I know three of you pretty well. Basically, I want to convey three things. I moved from here to UC Berkeley in 1986, and I was astounded at how dilapidated Berkeley was after just about 20 years of rent control. I've heard that four of you are not pushing for rent control. And I frankly, I don't believe you. I think you are lying to us. And I would ask you to publicly state now that you will vote against rent control if and when that comes up while you're on this dais, now or in the future terms. Rent control is a disaster. I moved from Berkeley to Culver City. And I had friends in Santa Monica, and it was likewise dilapidated because of rent control and people not investing in their houses. Monterey has a pretty significant problem with lack of owner occupation, our number, occupying of houses. Our numbers are way lower than the national average. That is a problem. It does, I actually agree with some of the people that I think are supporting you, that we need a sense of community and a sense of homeownership, not government tutelage and top down regulation. This is related to the housing mandate. I've heard the mayor speak about his desire to increase density of Monterey. I pray, as one man, I pray that you go down on that. Because a little more density to help us build more houses is one thing. But to turn this place into Waikiki or Ipanema, I don't think that's the vision of Monterey residents and voters. So be careful with the, with the density thing. And so with that, I think I just reiterate, my experience with rent control, not good. My experience with the sincerity of your intentions about this rental registry, I'm incredulous. And then number three, I think you do have an opportunity to look at how to help people buy houses. And that's where I'd wish you'd focus your energy. Thank you for your time. And then number three, I think you do have an opportunity to look at how to help people buy houses. And that's where I'd wish you'd focus your energy. Thank you for your time.
All right, we'll take it online. Public comments closed in the chamber.
All right, first is Esther.
Good afternoon, everybody. Yet again, not a single, you know, person has really spoken out that is a low income renter there. There are people that are renters by choice that have just spoken, but others that are renters because they can't afford to ever be a homeowner. We, you know, the the rent, the renters are voters and just because they are silent majority does not mean that you guys voices are being heard just because you're able to speak out with no repercussions. I want to point out that the true mom and pops should really be pressuring the property management companies because they are the ones that were brought to the table years ago because they have so many units that they manage in the area. And they are the ones that have created a worse problem than we've ever had. We have AB fourteen eighty-two that has a couple of more years on it. And when that expires, we need to be able to have some sort of protection for people who work here and and rent here. Because otherwise you're not going to have anybody that's going to be able to work in this area. Property management companies have come up with all kinds of creative ways to get around the ten percent annual maximum increase. For example, one of them, probably more, but I've been told of one that charges if you pay by check because they want you to use the their portal. We have outrageous deposits that have increased tremendously, which even if you can afford the rent, you can't afford the deposits. And that that has a bill that just passed to Sacramento. And most increase incredulous is they are now requiring insurance renter insurance companies and renters to include the name of the property management company on the rental insurance policy. That is double dipping. And that is what we have going on here.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tom.
Thank you. First, I want to start with my thanks to the council for amending the draft ordinance to have the what's been called the mom and pops exclusion. And that addresses my most primary say concern about this ordinance. But if during your deliberations, you should take the tangent of eliminating that exemption, I would ask that you please at least exempt family to family rentals. And the reason I ask for that is I don't think it's the public's business to know what the rental arrangements are between a parent and a child or a child and a parent. So if if you should go in that direction, please at least keep that in mind. There's been a lot talked about rent control, but nothing's been said about the vacancy tax that you've mentioned in the past. And that's another thing I have in the back of my mind is that if somebody were to rent, say their house, say you're a teacher and you go on sabbatical for a year and you rent your house. Well, I think that gives you now the tag of being a landlord. And then you have to register with the city. And then when you come back from your sabbatical, I guess you have to register your house now as being a vacant rental. So I haven't heard anything about how that will be worked out. And I realize that's maybe a bit premature at this point because, you know, we're not, we're not there yet. But please hold that in mind too, as you venture down this path. And with that, I'll conclude. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Lori, and this is the last speaker.
Good evening. Some of the things I want to talk about have been hit on, but I'll try to hit them a little bit better with a little more detail. And I have sent in a letter that is hyperlink, so you'll be able to go to all of the data and the information. Yeah, I just want to hit the four hundred and eighty-two cities in California. There's less than twenty-five doing it. That's only five percent of the cities in California. I'm going to use two examples of some that went down the road, just number A and B on the list, Alameda, Berkeley. I came from Alameda. They have grown exponentially to from two staff like Monterey wants to do to eight full-time staff with two more, another compliance officer, finance officer in the queue. Fees went up thirty percent from last year. Alameda lost fifteen hundred rentals in the first year and their budget is currently at two million. Berkeley, someone's mentioned, they're now at a seven and a half million dollar budget, three point three million of that is staff salaries, twenty-seven full-time staff. This year they approved a two hundred thousand dollar office relocation because their budget and staff has grown so big, they need to have additional office space. So the citizens are now in that program are having to pay another two hundred K for an office staff. So Seattle and Santa Barbara, people have mentioned those. It's good data. They both happened this year. Seattle council passed five registration rental laws in twenty twenty and after losing eleven thousand five hundred rental units by twenty twenty-one, they reversed course and they are they did not adopt rent control. Santa Barbara listened to its community, their council, listened to the wisdom of the economists, the community, and they opted for a task force to come up with housing solutions. One of just passed last month and they did not pass rent control. So last pleading to scrap this plan and go back and look at some of what other cities have done and why they opted out. Thank you for your time.
That's the end of the Zoom public comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for those that participated in public comment. We'll bring it back to the council for a motion and deliberation. Who wants to start us off? Well, I'm just wondering, one off and on. I'm wondering if we could clarify with staff about the thirty days. Somebody from staff could speak to that.
Nazanin can correct me if I'm wrong, but I did just do a quick search and I think the speakers from the public are correct that that is missing. So what I would suggest, if the council still wants to get the bulk of it passed to pass it as is tonight and then direct us to come back prior to the implementation in January, just to amend that one discreet part.
Did you have anything else, Alan? Did you wanted to? Okay, we can do comments too. Where it's with decisions with us now. So how wherever we want to go. Not everybody at once.
Go ahead.
Councilor Garcia.
All right. Thank you. As as I hear the the public speaking and can you hear me? Can you hear me now? Not quite. Oh, yeah, there we go. Thank you. Thank you. So as I hear the the public speak, I I appreciate the the concerns that are being being presented. And and I I think something that is missing in the picture is the conversations, and I'm going to speak for myself, the conversations that I have with residents on an ongoing basis. So really quick story, I, a few days ago, I spoke to one of my neighbors who came to me because they're concerned that they might not be able to make rent next month. Why? Because the owner decided to jack up the rent by eight hundred dollars. And just with a thirty day notice. So I hear this and I try to relate it to the comments that I've heard here this afternoon. There was a comment about having government get out of the way. I can't get out of the way when I have my neighbor coming to me saying I'm definitely not going to be able to make rent next month. Now, and there's another comment about how potentially, and I'm going to use eye language. I'm blaming landlords and and that they're responsible for the high rents. Well, when you hear a case like this that a landlord is raising the rent by eight hundred dollars, I can't see it any other way. I'm not saying that all landlords are doing this. But landlords are doing this. And and there there is significant proof in the conversations that I'm having with my neighbors on an ongoing basis. I can't, I can't ignore that. And we're hearing potentially one side here, but I'm sharing what I'm also hearing outside of this this meeting. There's a comment about it, about this being a ridiculous program, an unfair situation. Yeah, it's unfair. And it's, it can be unfair for both sides. So I I'm not, I'm sharing these stories so that hopefully we can come together and and try to figure out something that works for both sides. Because that's really what what's happening here. I hear comments about the decisions that I'm making is pitting tenants against landlords. That's already happening. And it's not because of the proposal of a rental registry. So all in all, the reason I'm supporting the registry is because I feel that that is and and that is, that is my opinion. You have your opinion. You all have your opinions and we all have the right to our opinions. The reason I'm supporting it is because I feel like I feel that this registry can provide us with more clear data in terms of really what the rental situation in the city of Monterey is. And that'll provide us better data in terms of what to do or maybe what not to do. And that's really the purpose, I think, for this registry, and that's the the reason why I'm supporting it. And something else that I wanted to add, as I was reading the ordinance, going back to the exemption of mom and pops, I I it it dawned on me that reading that language, it just it's it's a little bit more confusing, I think. So I I would even propose maybe to eliminate that exemption as well. That's it.
Okay, who would like to go next? Councilor Hoffa.
Yeah, can you hear me? Okay. Okay, thanks. So I'm glad to get the clarification on the thirty day notice and I certainly would want to follow staff's recommendation to make sure that that is included in the January action. I think the mom and pop amendment is really important. If if the council pulls that, I won't be able to support the rental registry. I just think that people who own, you know, one, two or three units, they're not really in this as a business and don't want to treat them like a business. And that exemption, I think, is appropriate. I was a little confused. I thought I heard a few folks identify as mom and pop and their concern. So just want to clarify, at least as it currently stands, the ordinance would exempt you if you have three or fewer units. So you just need to file for that exemption. So you would not need to participate. There was a lady who spoke about how her contract and lease is sort of a personal document. Just to be clear, my understanding and reading of this is we're not asking to see your lease. The information by and large that's being asked for is 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 public knowledge. It's how big the property is. It's who owns the property. It's, you know, how many bedrooms there are and it's the rent. So I don't see that as being invasive or you know, getting in the way of your relationship between the tenant and the landlord. I just don't see that. Somebody said we're scapegoating. I think it might have been Mr. Samuel's. I don't see it that way. I'm not blaming anyone. I'm just trying to address a problem. This is a problem that has been brought to our attention. And that's what we're trying to do. Lori, who spoke, she also wrote, I had a chance to read your email before the meeting, Lori. And you asked about whether or not we would support sort of lifting. How can I put this? You were worried that somehow council would prohibit rental increases when properties become vacant. I don't see that as something that I would be interested in. Just want to be really clear on that. I think that is the appropriate time to kind of reset rent is when a property becomes vacant. So you know, this is going to let us know what is actually going on. We've heard from some folks, some of you here who said rents in Monterey are great, that it's really affordable here compared to other places. Maybe you're right. I don't know. I'd like to actually see real data that I can be confident in. And that way I'll have a better understanding of, for example, what the average rents are here. How many units we have at different sort of price points, how many units we have of different sizes? That will also inform our planning for housing. I think we'll also be able to see if there is an issue where the issue lies. Not scapegoating, but just identifying where the problem is. So if there's a few management companies that are the ones that are driving increases in rents, we'll see that. If it's not, if there isn't something going on, maybe our rents here are lower than other places of, you know, comparable comparable types of locations, then we'll see that. But we'll know. So we'll also know if housing laws are being violated. And that's very important. So to me, information is power. Information informs decision-making. Information is beneficial to all of us. So I'm I'm ready to move forward with the ordinance as it is with the understanding that staff will bring back, would bring back the you know, to make sure we have the thirty day notice before any action were taken by a tenant.
Okay, who would like to go next? Councilor Berber.
So thank you, everybody, for being able to give all your feedback. I took notes on everything that was said. I think it some good points were brought up from different sides. And I think it's important even about the thirty day. Thank you for clarifying that. But also the other piece was that I know we were talking about clarification for the property owner or the property manager. Did we have clarification that that we discussed last time or this? Is this something we need to discuss now?
I would just add to that. I think what the question was is who can submit, who can do the registration, whether it be the property management company or the landlord, and I think it could be either, but Nazanin, I see your hand gone up here.
Okay, all right. So maybe she can give me clarification on that.
Oh, you, Nazanin.
Oh, okay. Sorry. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't. Yeah. So as it's written right now, the ordinance says that a landlord can register and a landlord is defined to include either the owner or a lessor or property management company. So anyone can register. I think where the confusion is happening is that in the information that is required to be submitted, it is requiring that information about both the owner and any property management company or property manage onsite property manager be included. And I think we discussed last time that the reason for having all of that information in particular is that if there was some sort of enforcement action, it would need to be taken against the actual owner of the property and not the property management company. And so that is the reason for asking for information for both the And not the property management company. And so that is the reason for asking for information for both the property management. And the actual owner of the property. But as it's written. You know, anyone can fill out the forms and submit it as long as they're authorized to do so.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. So, okay, I just want to make sure that was clarified. I know some things, some points of focusing to capture the rental market was made about what I talked about with the snapshot. I still think that's important because just as even my colleague was saying. A, a conquer, a, a council member, Hopper. Is that we don't know what we don't know because we never took a snapshot of what our, our rental market even says. And if we have sixty five percent of renters in this community, and we don't even know what that market looks like, even from a real estate point of view. It doesn't make sense for us not to know. So to me, this is very important for us to make sure that we're doing. Also, understanding that there are several other voices. I think my other colleague, Councilmember Garcia was bringing up about how other people were contacting us as well. So we are listening to the voices, but we're listening to all voices. And I think the whole thing is in getting the snapshot. Is not to have, putting one against the other, but to be able to see what it looks like. So we know what we can do, or what we should do, or what we shouldn't do, just like Councilman Hopper was saying earlier. But I, I know they talked about Berkeley and in Monterey, and, and they're two different types of towns. And so I think, you know, it's kind of comparing apples and oranges. So that's the way I looked at that. It was told that all of the information we are trying to get is being invasive, and I think this has already been talked about, but that's part of the reason that. I'm looking at supporting this is because you just said it, it's on Zillow. So if it's on Zillow and all that information, all we're doing is putting in, in a, in one place so that we can get a snapshot. We can't take all the different pieces and try to figure out what's legitimate, what's not legitimate. And, and be able to find all the different pieces of what a snapshot. It's kind of like taking. A big puzzle piece and having puzzle pieces, a thousand puzzle pieces. And you don't know where all of them are, how they come together to make the big picture. And so to me, that's how I look at that. And I believe the other point was about housing growth and housing ownership and us being able to address and put our time and energy there. We are. So we're doing both because we need a lot of housing needs. So we're looking at both. We're looking at all of those pieces. As far as looking into those things that, that we're talking about earlier. And I know this is not an easy thing because change is never easy for anyone, but I think it's important to understand and know that. As we move forward, we're, we're trying to see where we are, and we can't move forward until we know where we, where we're starting from. So that's why I would be supporting it with the changes of the thirty day. It's section eight point two oh five E.
Councilmember Smith.
So I think one of the speakers, Mr. Rosenthal, very aptly put. When you're developing policy and you're setting about trying to solve a problem, you've clearly identified the problem. And you also include what your attempt and, and the goal is going to be and what the desired outcomes are going to be. Through this process, I'm struck by listening to the council members trying to figure out. The individual goals that they may have. And we hear phrases like. We need a baseline. We need to start with data so we can develop some decision points in the future. So what an expensive process to do that. There is such an easier way and less expensive way. To get you the data that you say that you want. You have partners that have come out of the woodwork and offered. We can still buy the software and pay the license and do this for forty or fifty thousand dollars a year. But we could collaborate this. If everything is really on Zulu, and Zillow. And, and a lot of the other free market opportunities, then I don't know why we want to. Hire two staff members and put the community through this. It just seems like. We have a misalignment between the goal and the effect of the policy. As I've said. I think there's overwhelming statements that this body has received. In emails and in person. And yes, there is valid remarks by those that we've talked to that are tenants. That are in circumstances as Councilmember Garcia has outlined. But what we don't know is the other circumstances of, we don't know if that home was transferred from. A, a mother and father to the children where they've gotten a mortgage. Or where it's been recently sold and they now have a greater mortgage. Or that their rent has been below market rate. And the eight hundred dollars is a catch up because they've lost money. Or they have pending repairs on the roof or the foundation that the owner's going to have to invest. There are a plethora of circumstances that play into the factor of why rent has to be adjusted. I've owned property, never owned any other property other than my primary residence in Monterey. I've been a landlord. I've had these conversations with tenants. Tenants have choices, landlords have choices. But landlords are primarily investing their capital, capital with a great amount of risk. And this whole conversation has truly pitted landlords versus tenants, and I've heard it from both sides. And we've heard from tenants. And we've heard from tenants personally who have said, we think this will harm us. So any policy that's going to get down the path of potential harm, I think is a bad policy. I think there's a big difference between when you're analyzing a problem. Is when you go down the path to feel it. When you get fallen into the trap of feeling that you just need to have a policy that just does something. I think you fail to think. You fail to analyze and you fail to land on the right policy. I think the bigger issue that we've completely missed here, and I've said it before. Is that I think we should use our time, energy and inertia. To galvanize the effort towards assisting with down payments. And with assisting in homeownership. I think there's an opportunity to expand it. What's the biggest problem in this conversation? Supply. We know that. But this city is not with this action going to increase the supply. One iota. So if this policy thinks that it's just going to be gathering data. So you can make future decisions. It is the future decision going to be, oh, voila, what this really tells us is we need thirty six hundred more units. What are you gonna do? You don't have the water, you don't have the land. This policy does not get you to solve the real problem. With the rents in Monterey. It's supply and demand. And this issue or this item tonight. As it moves forward, as I suspect it will be. Is money that will be passed on to the tenants. And a variety of other costs will be passed on to the tenants. Will cause rents to go up and will hurt those that you're trying to help. And to me, it's a policy that misses the mark. I think you're gonna hurt, you're gonna make the problem worse. You're gonna hurt those that you claim that you want to help. And I urge you to pause, not do this. We've heard from so many people that have had great arguments that have said. Don't do it. This is the wrong thing. This is the wrong path. I think tonight the status, the stat that was given to us is four hundred and eighty two cities in California. And twenty five cities do this. Most of those cities are larger cities. Why in the world would we want to get involved in this piece? When we don't have a clear path of an outcome that's going to address the core problem. Water and supply. You'll still be here in a year or two. So I urge you to not do this. I urge you to pause the vote. Table this. And let's convene an opportunity to spend that money where it's better spent, but I think it's not a good expenditure of money. And I think it's over government reach. Thank you, Mayor.
Alright, so. One of the comments that. I've, I've heard from folks that I've talked to individually and, and another member of the public had iterated it today. Was regarding the concern around. How sometimes landlords don't make money off of rentals, and I think that that's absolutely true. And I think it speaks a little bit to Councilmember Smith, your point just now about how. It's a significant investment, and it, and it, that's exactly what it is. It's an investment. And there's risk associated with that. And so. I don't want to belittle the concerns that are, are, are real for, for landlords. That exist around the, the work and the complexities of dealing with managing a rental property. Though I would argue you are so fortunate to be able to have a property. That is outside of your primary residence. I'm not fortunate enough to be able to do that with my financial circumstances. I don't want to pit. Us from one against the other. But it is, it is a choice. And, and whether you are acquiring that from, from family or however you come into. Possession of that additional property. There might be circumstances that. Create an environment where you're not making money. But it is an investment and, and, and it's a choice that you have. I would argue that housing is a human right. And we have people in this town that are suffering, that are suffering, that are ending up homeless. That don't have any other choice. And. So we're supposed to. Put on equal playing field. A landlord and a tenant. One of the other comments that was shared was, you know, my tenants have expressed concern with this. And I, I wonder how much the, the tenant fully appreciates it. And I, and I wonder how much a tenant would maybe be fully honest with a landlord to share. That they're in support of a rental registry to their landlord. If you can see that dynamic, there is a dominant person in the relationship. And there is somebody that's at the expense of another individual. And so. In as much as I respect. Property rights, I also respect human rights, and I think that housing is a human right that we have to be respectful for. And that's where I think that there's value in us having conversation about moving forward with the rental registry. There was another comment in regards to how this doesn't faze us. And I will speak truthfully about where I come from. That is just false. I hear the public comment. And although I might make a policy decision that diverges from what you think is the right pathway forward here. Doesn't mean that I don't hear you. It doesn't mean that I don't understand your plight and your circumstances that exist. In regards to what it means to be a landlord in the direction that the city looks like it's taking. So I just wanted to iterate that it does absolutely faze me, and I am absolutely concerned. We don't, nobody can fully know what this is going to be like in the city of Monterey as we roll this out. Nobody does. So we will implement it and see how it goes. And I, and I understand the concerns that exist in regards to the impacts to landlords. I would also iterate that, and I've said this several times, and I will continue saying it, that not all landlords are bad. In fact, I would argue that most landlords are good, particularly mom and pop. Folks that might own a few, a few units that are just trying to make it by. I, I, I want to be really clear that this is not to be punitive against landlords. We are simply leveraging our legislative power that exists within the city of Monterey to try to address an issue. The, the intent is not to create division. It's not to create a battle. And although it might feel that way, I. I, I don't know how else I can say that that's not the intent. The intent isn't to, to drive divisions in the city. That doesn't make sense. Why would we sit here and do that? And, and, and I think that if you're, I, I think that. Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. I'm going to ask you all to refrain from making comments, or we'll ask you to leave. You've had your chance to speak during public comment, and the council is now trying to take an opportunity to deliberate this discussion.
Just give a little leeway. Don't make threats.
And I think that's kind of part of my, that's kind of part of my, my point. If we can't sit here and have a civil discussion. I get that there's raw emotion here. I get it. And, and, and it affects some people more than others. But if we can't be respectful towards us having a differences of opinion. I, I, I sat, I sat here, even though I disagreed with some of the comments that were made. And I respectfully listened to what you had to say. I didn't interrupt you. I gave room and leeway. We have to be coming to a space of respecting each other. And so. I, I hope that that could be received by, if not all, I, I ask for most. To understand that we're not coming from a place of wanting to create divisions. We're trying to find solutions that address some issues that are, are facing the city of Monterey. And again, we may not agree with them at the end of the day, but I just want to be clear that we're not doing this to drive a fork into the side of landlords. There was. Somewhat of an attack on the council and, and it, and it kind of leached over to the city manager and the city attorney. As far as trying to do whatever we want to do, moving this direction and not taking advice. That's fine to be directed towards the council, but I, I will iterate that the city manager and the city attorney. Are doing the work of the city. And they do that through the direction of the council. So I just ask you not to point fingers at city staff that is being directed to do work by their bosses. So I just wanted to, to make sure that we're, we're being mindful of the direction that staff has been given. There was a comment around notice of tenants to landlords. I think there, and again, lies a little bit of a, of a concern that. Tenants are living in fear of retaliation. And so maybe I would encourage landlords, say, hey, to your tenant, hey, if you have an issue, please let me know. I will not, you know, have that conversation. But for us to come from a place of saying, hey, tenant, you're required to say something to your landlord before you go to the city. I think that just creates a little bit of a problem in the dynamic of the relationship between the tenant and the landlord. And the tenant, and, and those tenants that are in fear of retaliation, which is a real thing that exists. Do you know, I appreciate you coming in and sharing. The, the direction that I was trying to go in last time, and I don't know what this looks like for us moving forward today. I, I kind of want to ask staff if we make changes today, what that might impact in regards to the implementation of, of the rental registry. But I, I, I also look to, I, I, Alan, I hear your concern in regards to your inability to be able to support by. Changing the exemption piece, though you seemed open to that discussion. When we met last time, so I, I, I would urge us to, to think through that a little bit. Because, again, even though we're. Even though we're requiring them to self-identify. There's still data missing there that could help us lead to the full picture in regards to the direction that. That we can take as a city with the data. And so I, I just posed that back out, and I, and I also want to check in with Councilmember Barber in regards to where she's at with. The possibility of removing that exemption that Gina raised. So let me just pause there and check in with Councilmember Barber and staff in regards to time and what that might look like.
So at this point, I'm fine with exemptions and how, how it lands here. I want to add the thirty day in to make sure that we make good on what we said earlier from the last meeting. And now we have the clarification done with the property owner, property manager. Long as they're registering at that point in time, if the mom and pop, we at least have that information to be able to put the puzzle pieces together. So that's where I'm standing.
Okay.
Point of, point of order, or a point of clarification.
Sure.
I want to make sure I understood you, Dr. Barber. Are you saying that you support the three homes exemption? As not registered?
Yeah, it, it did, but you have to put in for that.
If you get, you have to put in for an exemption.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, so you support it as it's drafted.
As it is.
As it is drafted tonight. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I, I think my question still pointed at staff, because if we change. Okay, I think my question still pointed at staff because if we change that that segment now. Today regarding the thirty days. Does that cause problems for staff in the implementation process? So like if we made that change today and we had to come back at the November seventh council meeting to do the second reading for a third time.
No.
Would that slow us down?
No, we we don't. So so what we recommend is that you pass the ordinance as is and we come back to you with the thirty days. As an amendment to the existing ordinance.
Okay.
So so pass the audit. So our suggestion is pass the ordinance as presented. We will come back to you before January first to make sure that the thirty days is amended then to the existing ordinance as you passed it.
I guess part of my thought is, is that if we can do it now and have the second reading come back in November. Then we're, it's a one and done versus doing an edit to the ordinance, then we're going to have to have a first reading and a second reading again. I I just wonder.
Either either way works. The only difference cost wise, Clementine will tell you it probably costs. Five thousand dollars to publish the whole, or I always get that number wrong.
Let me pull it up. Hang on one second.
So we'd have to republish the whole ordinance again as opposed to just a discrete section thirty days from now or before January.
That would be a greater cost.
That's one cost expense. Otherwise procedurally, I think it's fine. I I think community development might have some concerns. With getting the database able to be up and running by January. So once it passes, we'll go out for the R C. We already have. Okay, so I think it's probably.
Okay.
So I just want to reiterate, I would not be interested.
Oh, okay, sorry, okay.
Removing the exemption.
Okay. Go ahead, Clementine.
Sorry, it is about twenty five hundred dollars to notice the full ordinance, or it was that much to notice the full ordinance and some shorter ordinances this year have been more in the six hundred, seven hundred dollar range.
Okay. So. What does the council desire in regards to the idea of making the change now versus having it come back?
Yeah, I don't, I don't hear a majority wanting to make a change other than.
No, so you're talking about the thirty day notice.
I I guess I'm going to look to Chrissy again. Chrissy, what do you recommend?
E- either either method is legally fine.
I think it's just a matter of cost and time.
Right.
So could we go ahead and put the thirty day in today?
You you could, and then we could come back again for another reading. And then it would be finalized after that. Or it could pass as is today and then staff would come back sometime before the implementation of the registration requirement and put in that thirty day tenant. Advanced notice before taking independent action, legal action.
Okay, so somebody ready to make a motion?
Comment before you do. It's kind of an example of how I think it's a poor policy. I obviously I'm going to lose this vote again. I wanted to respond to one of the comments in the dialogue that we were having since this is. Truly a a collaborative effort where this document is now is different than when it started out. There's parts of it, I think it's a compromise that actually I've heard from some that is, it's better than they expected. To have the exemption of the three, I think is one example. To have landlord protection where the the thirty days where the tenant. Can't just, you know, raise up the flagpole and start problems before they actually have a conversation with their. Their landlord. I I think it's important to identify also. That this city has the code enforcement responsibility. To enforce public safety laws. And we do that all the time. This is nowhere close to strengthening that necessarily. Because we can always take a letter and email, a text or a phone call. Or flag down or a visit through any door of City Hall. Where a tenant can say, I've got a problem with my landlord or the building and my health and safety is in jeopardy. That happens all the time in every city in California. So we don't need a policy like this to reinforce our duty of code enforcement to protect the health and safety. Of our residents if they are a tenant. So I just want to reinforce that. This has nothing to do with helping to support. Health and safety for tenants. This has everything to do with policing a relationship between landlords and tenants. To collect data. And I'll stand by and wait, I guess, for the first year of report to see what that data provides this council. For future policy decisions, and that's the unknown. But on the code enforcement piece. They, that every tenant and any citizen has an opportunity to make a report and they should do that. And I don't think that a tenant is going to fall prey to being intimidated because of the power and authority dynamic. They can make the report anytime they need to.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else in the council wish to make a comment before we go to a motion? Okay, and I I'll just iterate that. I think it's. Clear to most folks that you can. You can submit a complaint for a code violation. I think the problem is the inability to be able to. Get over the hump of the retaliation piece and potential of losing your. You unit because of retaliation that does happen. In this city, but point well made and we'll see how this goes moving forward. I will entertain a motion.
So. I would like the motion to accept the reading as is with addition of the thirty day notice to be added to section eight point two oh five E.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, any other discussion on the motion?
Question. I think the public needs to know an explanation of what the motion will entail because we had a conversation about. Wrapping up tonight for a second reading and coming back. So with the motion on the floor, what's the effect of this ordinance?
All right, so I'm going to. Read. The staff recommendation is that the city council adopt an ordinance to establish rental inventory and require registration of all residential. Rental properties within the city of Monterey beginning January first of twenty twenty four. And so the emotion is that with the addition, with the addition of adding the thirty day notice. Okay, all right, any other comments? Oh, go ahead, Clementine.
But if we're amending it now, then that would be a, we would have another second reading.
Correct, that's correct. Okay, any other comments? All right, all those in favor? I, any opposed?
No.
All right, motion passes for one. We will move on to item number five. Reappropriate C I P closeout project budget savings in the amount of. Five point five million to various active capital improvement projects, program projects and appropriate. Two hundred and ninety K in general fund ending balance to the green belt fuel reduction and tree removal projects. Pass it to Hans for staff presentation.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an agenda report where we basically ran our. Existing budgets on various C I P funds, we identified. Projects and that sixteen projects that we recommend to be closed. And or combined with active projects, we calculated cost savings or. We we collected a closeout on on those projects that we want to close out of five point four million dollars. And we are recommending to allocate that those funds. To other C I P projects that are in in similar nature, i.e. If we have sewer funds, they have to go into a sewer project. If we have a marina funds, it has to go into marina fund, et cetera. The list of those projects is actually attached in attachment. One or attachment A, exhibit A. And you can see that projects that are being deappropriated, we are putting that money either back into other projects or we're putting the money into. Contingency. So that's in general, the. The intent of this agenda report and I'm looking forward to any questions.
All right, bring it to the council for any questions on this item. Any questions?
No questions, and I just want to say. Well, thank you because it's important to hear this.
Okay, perfect. All right, with that. Okay, with that, we'll go out. I'm sorry, I'm going to try to expedite this a little bit just so that we can get out of here. We're past time already. So go out to the public for comments. Anybody in the chamber wish to make I comments on this item? And anybody online will go ahead and give you a countdown to reuse the raise hand function. Five, four, three, two, one. All right, so we've captured the folks and pass it to Clementine to run through those.
Calling on the first telephone caller with the last three digits, seven zero five.
Yes, good evening, council members in there. Excuse me. Monterey touched down too many trees for parking lots for fuel reduction for threats to houses and safety. Monterey doesn't have the trees or the beauty or the cleaner air Carmel and P G have. I am hoping council members, you will adamantly discourage the Fuel Reduction Act to include the cutting of trees. Trees are not the problem as they are being blamed for debris. Brush, ladder branches, wooden fences, wooden houses, and the cutting down of trees is the fire hazard. Trees keep the air cool and moist. Cutting them down creates drier climbs and thus greater fire threats. I ask that you ask this fuel reduction request to give an estimate of the amount of trees to be sacrificed and why. It's easier to cut a tree than clean up the debris beneath. But in doing so, you are taking away the ability to keep our climbs cool, clean, safe and moist. Angel Island is a clear example of when. Cutting the eucalyptus trees exasperated the brush fire conditions. One of the target trees will no doubt be the giant and magnificent eucalyptus trees wrongfully targeted as a fire tree. When in fact, they were used as wind and fire breaks in the past. We need every tree right now to combine combat climate change and we don't have another hundred years to grow trees from saplings, which are more susceptible to fire than big trees. I made these same comments when this green belt fuel reduction plan was first proposed and yet it is being ignored. Because the science is based on timber science, cut the trees science, so timber industries could have an excuse to cut down more of our forests. Please, I want you to ask the question, how many trees are going to be cut? And if they don't have the answer, tell them to go back and give an estimate. Thank you.
Thank you, and we have one more phone caller speaker. Do I please?
My name is Nina Beatty. What tree removal? Unless a tree is falling over or there are obvious signs that failures imminent, trees should not be removed. Why aren't fire officials addressing an actual fire danger on every single building, including in the high hazard zones? Smart meters, they're hazardous. There is severe health hazard to trees and humans and with known fire and electrical hazards. They malfunction, the meters aren't grounded and have inadequate surge protection. When their variable resistor pops, all the voltage from the line flows into a building destroying appliances and electronics, burning the wiring and if enough voltage causing an electrical fire. Electrical fires happen instantaneously in a much higher temperature than vegetation or house fires. Igniting with more ferocity with the Amian battery storage in homes is also dangerous. Yet the information I provided to the city for over ten years and my fire report in two thousand nineteen filled with evidence is ignored. Why? Where are fire officials? What is the real agenda? High density Waikiki for investors? Lush forests are fire preventers with high moisture content, low wind and dense growth, the opposite conditions of fire needs. That's common sense. But look at what we've done to the forest. A witch hunt for non-natives is unscientific and false if that's what you mean by tree removal. Eucalyptus trees are native to this continent millions of years before Australia and have extremely high water content in their trunks. And when you create openings in the tree canopy for the forest, the trees are more vulnerable to wind and falling over. The roots of pine trees interlace with each other with the canopy cover that preserves the forest. Remove trees and it will take less and less stress to cause them to fall over. Warren Buffett said, don't ask a barber if you need a haircut. That's what's happening instead of science. Officials are seeing trees and vegetation as an enemy instead of the solution. Instead of listening to independent local experts, the city keeps marching down the echo chamber captured agency route. Only by reconnecting to the earth will we get out of this terrible situation. Where we are risks everyone's lives, all of our relatives, many of whom aren't even allowed into this conversation.
All right, that is the end of our Zoom comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Clementine. I just wanted to pass it to staff real quick. I I heard one of the. Comments being that that last one, a statement about the only trees that should be cut down are ones that are eminently. In danger of falling or or dying. Can we have some clarification on that?
Yeah, so so. I I tried to weigh my words carefully. So there was a lot of misinformation that was being shared here. Greenbelt fuel reduction has nothing to do with removing live trees. I've said this before, I I say it again. We do greenbelt fuel reduction for, I want to say, more than three decades. You look out of the window, you see trees everywhere. What we will remove is is vegetation brush, fire brush. We will remove dead trees. But not a single live tree will be removed. So that's that's what we call greenbelt fuel reduction. Will not involve the removal of healthy live trees. It will, we will remove dead trees if we encounter them, but mainly it's brush. And and invasive species that create a fire danger. Again, we're doing this for thirty years. You look out of every window, you're living here, you see trees all around you. If if we take live trees on, you would look a desert. Thank you.
All right, any questions, comments from this council?
No, thank you.
Any motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve of this agenda item five.
All right, is there a second? All right, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor? I, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item number ten. First reading by title only of an ordinance to rezone eight seven five Spencer Street from R three five to R three five H two. As a city historic resource. And authorize a Mills contract. Pass it to Hans for staff presentation.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, counsel, as always, a nice lesson in architectural history for the city of Monterey and Matthew Bugard will will present to you.
Good afternoon. And now for something completely different. Good afternoon. My name is Matthew Bugarts and I'm an associate planner with the city of Monterey's planning division. Today, we're here to talk about eight twenty five Spencer Street for proposed Mills Act and rezoning to H two designation. Maybe. Staff's recommendation is that the city council adopt resolutions to both adopt an ordinance to rezone the property to H two historic designations. And approve a Mills Act contract for the property. The subject property is in the northwestern side of the city. And a intensive survey was prepared for the property by architectural historian Kent Seavy. As would be known as the Henry Leonard's House, it qualifies as a local historic resource under criteria three, which is for design. Specifically that it embodies distinctive characteristics of a type period region or method of construction. For this property, it's one of only two in the city that can be classified under art modern architecture. Which grew from art deco and streamlined modern in the nineteen twenties and thirties. And this is a photo of the property itself. It would have been from a design book from the late forties, I believe it was. And. Architectural features include the porthole window that was on the front along with speed lines. Prior recommendations for this property include in July, the HPC recommended. For planning commission to recommend to city council that they adopt an ordinance to rezone the property historic. And they also directly recommended to city council to approve the Mills Act contract itself. And then in September, the planning commission seconded. HPC's recommendation to rezone the property as a local historic resource. The property meets the eligibility requirements for H two overlay zoning and the Mills Act program. And that the property has been identified by the historian to be a significant resource and that granting the contract will serve to offset the maintenance. Of the resource, the maintenance schedule is submitted and included as part of the agenda packet. And with that, staff's recommendation is for city council to adopt resolutions to both rezone the property and approve the Mills Act contract. Any questions by the council? All right, let's take it out to the public. So if anybody wishes to speak on this item online.
All right, let's take it out to the public. So if anybody wishes to speak on this item online, feel free to use the raise hand function. Anybody in the chamber? All right, if you have, if you have any comments to make, you'll have to come up to the mic. So we have one in the chamber. Anybody else? Okay, we'll close public comment in the chamber, and then we'll count down from online to five, four, three, two, one. We have nobody online. All right, sir, you have the mic. Okay. All right, we will close public comment, bring it back to the council for deliberation or emotion.
I'll move to approve.
Second with the comment.
Okay.
Go ahead. So part of the staff report indicates the background, the information. Thank you very much. Very thorough report. The process, as you know, is outlined. It's important to honor that. We're looking at an older photograph that's in the staff report, and if you advance it, you see a photocopy of the house that's there. That, what an improvement. So obviously, it's a family that's invested. That we saw the finished product of a photo that we saw earlier. So it looks like a lot of work has been done. And it's exciting when you can say that somebody is taking care of an older historical property like this. And they are, they're turning it into something that's very valuable for the neighborhood. So I just want to say, as you talk to those that are going through this process, it's very rewarding to be able to see the progression, the photographs, and the outcome of something that we know is their investment. We know that they're taking care of it, and we greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Well said. Any other comments from the council? All right, all those in favor? I, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Go ahead and recess at this time and reconvene at seven P M. for the evening session. Thank you, everybody.
This meeting and we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance and council member Ed, how about you leading us off?
You bet. Please join me at stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wow, these are for younger. I'm thinking, um, wow, okay. Um, so I'd like to call on Clementine to read the procedures for public comment on public comments, which I guess we're going to start with public comments not on the agenda. So if you're here for the neighborhood community improvement project agenda, hold off. But if you're wanting to comment on something else, this is going to concern you. Go ahead, Clementine.
Yes, so these are the procedures for making these public comments. Uh, the vice mayor will request that persons wishing to speak line up at the podium, raise their hands or use star nine on the telephone or the raise hand function in Zoom to determine the number of persons interested in. or the raise hand function in Zoom to determine the number of persons interested in speaking on these non-agendized matters. The amount of time for a public comment on non-agendized matters will be determined based on the number of persons interested in speaking. The maximum time allotted for all public comment on the non-agendized matters is thirty minutes. In exceptional circumstances and when necessary to ensure full opportunity for public input, the mayor or vice mayor may, with city council consent, adjust the amount of time allowed for public input and/or the amount of time allotted to each speaker. And please note that for regular meetings with an afternoon and evening session like today, public comments on non-agendized matters are taken during both sessions and individuals may choose to speak once at either session but not both. So anyone who spoke in the afternoon would not be speaking in the evening.
All right, so this is the opportunity, if you'd like to speak on a non-agenda item, if you could come and stand over here, it'd be great. All right, I'm not seeing anyone. If anyone is online and you would like to speak on a non-agenda item, so that's, that would not include the neighborhood community improvement project item. Please raise your hand.
No hands are being raised, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and close the non-agenda public comment. And let's see, we will move forward to our first reading, blah, 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 is this right? No, we did that already.
Adam eleven.
Yeah, we'll move forward on number eleven, which is approve, adopt and approve funding for the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four neighborhood and community improvement program. Do we have a staff report?
Yes.
All right, let's move to that.
Vice Mayor Hoffer, thank you so much. We have a staff report which will be presented by Reggie Paulding. The, the NCIP program is a very cherished program here in the city of Monterey. It is part of our city constitution, the city charter. It allocates sixteen percent of the hotel tax annually towards neighborhood and community improvement programs. And so tonight, after a lengthy process of selecting projects, we are presenting to you the recommendation by, by the neighborhood community improvement program for their projects this year. I, I like to lower the expectations by, for the council as well as for the NCIP committee. Because we are in a real staffing crisis. We have challenges in recruiting engineers and project managers. That's not just typical for the city of Monterey. That's the same situation also in the private sector where we usually also recruit additional resources for that. So a great deal of the projects you will see today will be not come to fruition in the next twelve months. We will work very hard to, to come up with solutions to really do something about the recruitment challenges that we have. Forthcoming to you will be an agenda report with our recommendations and how we can improve staffing levels and that will include compensation and other incentives to, to become an attractive area for those qualified who want to work in, in engineering. But, but unfortunately, the, the challenge for us is that a great deal of the projects that we have on the launch pad with the NCIP, also a great deal of projects that we actually have within our CIPs is, is, is challenged by that staffing shortage. And so wanted to share that upfront with you. I want to share that also with those who worked on all those suggestions. And I want to share with you also that, again, as I stated, we will bring a proposed recommendation forward to work on those staffing challenges because they will impact this program and previous programs and future programs if we do not address that. So with that disclaimer, I will hand it over to Reggie and he has short presentation for you. And then, of course, we are ready for your questions as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, so as Hans said, my name is Reggie Paulding. I joined the city in January of this year. So just about nine months exactly here. I came on board to provide some relief to Tom Hardy, who's been serving as the NCIP coordinator. And I'm taking on that role. All right, so here we have a presentation on the NCIP program. As Hans said, it was a lengthy process. We started in February. Oh, I'm jumping ahead here. All right. All right, so just to take a quick step back, so neighborhood and community improvement program was created to preserve the uniqueness of Monterey. And here we have a picture of an early eighteen sixties or so shot of, of the coastline. All right, so neighborhood improvement program originally NIP was established in nineteen eighty-five. Measure B provides at least sixteen percent of annual transit occupancy tax revenue to the NIP. That was, Measure B was in nineteen eighty-eight. So it's a longstanding program here in the city. All right, so we have here a map of the city showing the various neighborhoods. There's a total of sixteen. The city's broken up into sixteen neighborhoods, not including the Presidio and Naval Postgraduate School. All right, so we have fifteen, fifteen of those communities have representatives on the committee. On, and the one that's not represented is Ryan Ranch. So we have a voting process, zero to ten. So each rep has an opportunity to vote zero, one through four, one through ten on any and all projects. And that'll, you'll see the results of those votes coming up later. So here's just a quick timeline. So program, project submittal for this cycle were due on February tenth of this year. And then on February twenty-third, we had a preliminary screening. We met, the committee met approximately six times to go over the various projects. We had fifty-three new project submittals and sixty-one recent renominated projects that were previously approved. And then funding was deappropriated. So March through May, we had four, four additional meetings of the NCIP to go over those submitted projects. Of the original hundred and twenty or so projects that were submitted, we whittled it down to ninety-three based on different criteria, including they needed to be capital improvement projects and some of the other projects were were removed or withdrawn by the submitter. And so then, well, I'm sorry, we had voting night was on August, I'm sorry, June first. Oh, oh, sorry, I'm pushing the wrong button here. We had voting night on June first. And there was a grand total actually of up to a hundred and thirty because two of the representatives were absent that on voting night. So it was thirteen total representatives present. August tenth, we took the final voting numbers with final cost estimates to the NCIP, showed them those numbers and put together the final list of forty-four projects that we're going to present tonight plus four cutoff projects. On August twenty-second, we went to the planning commission and presented the projects and got their recommendation that they all met with the various plans or determination they met with the various plans. On September thirteenth, we went to Parks and Rec Commission and we, we presented the approximately twenty-two, twenty-three parks related projects for their information and their determination that it, the projects were consistent with the Parks and Rec plan. And then tonight, October seventeenth, we're here before you for final approval of the projects and budget. And this is just the list of the various plans from the planning commission. Okay, so to the dollars. We roughly, this year, NCIP has the five point seven million dollars in revenue plus the ninety-one thousand dollars in interest from the revenues made in twenty-two, twenty-three. And we have a hefty ending balance of two point, almost two point two million, which represents or includes one point two million from the dehumidifier project over at the sports center, if you recall that project. All right, so we have a grand total of seven point six million available for projects for this year. This is the list of projects. It's pretty tight, small, but there's a, we have a larger list. But anyway, this is just to give you kind of a feel for what it's a, it's a large swath. It covers almost every neighborhood, almost every type of project possible, everything from installing benches to, you know, road improvements to stop signs to, you know, fills, I mean, anything you can think of. And we have the, so total of forty-four plus four cutoff projects. Then one of the things that we'd like to, I guess, kind of bring to your attention is the ongoing O and M costs for the various projects. Based on the estimated six plus million dollars in projects that are recommended this year, we estimate that that comes to about two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in annual O and M costs just for those projects. Probably we have greater than two million dollars in total O and M costs for all of the NCIP projects that's, that have been installed, constructed, built over time. How did we get to these numbers? So take a useful service life for a project, one to thirty years, one year would be something, you know, that's, that's, you know, not gonna, doesn't have a very long life. There's types of five, ten pieces of equipment, things like bike racks. You know, twenty, thirty years, things that, you know, have, tend to last much longer, buildings and other pieces of infrastructure. One example, right now, today, as we speak, we have two hundred and ten thousand dollars in outstanding O and M costs on eleven non-functional speed radar signs throughout the city. They were installed by funds from the NCIP over the last fifteen years. But they are non-functional for various reasons. Some solar panels were stolen off of them, others they're beyond their useful life. We have some radar speed signs right now that were installed in two thousand eight, two thousand nine. That timeframe, they're, they're just non-functional. They can't be repaired. If, if we want to keep them, they have to be replaced. Average replacement cost is twenty-five thousand dollars per radar speed sign. Some of the recommended projects that are on the list right now, there's a shower at the municipal beach. There's what, two water bottle stations on the rec trail. We estimate the total for those projects is sixty thousand to install. And roughly speaking, we would estimate, you know, for a cost for water and replacement, if they're broken or damaged, that would be six thousand dollars a year. There's five projects to install streetlights throughout the city, including a long airport way at the fairgrounds. Those projects estimate at three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, twenty thousand dollars a year for electrical and other maintenance and operational costs. Del Monte Beach Boardwalk, there's three projects on the list right now, approximately thirty thousand dollars. I'm sorry, three hundred thousand dollars for those projects. And we estimate that's fifty thousand dollars a year in O and M. The boardwalk is all wood. It, you know, it, it has its issues. Boards need to be replaced on a continual basis. Ryan Ranch pickleball court. This is one, we have a hundred thousand dollars in the, recommended right now just for design. With an estimate, it could be as much as a million dollars to construct. If you take, you know, a twenty-year lifespan, right, one of those types of projects that's going to be long lasting. But you'll need to repair, replace, you know, netting, paint, so on. If it has, there's, can, maybe it will have, maybe it won't have bathrooms and lighting and so on. Could be as much as fifty thousand dollars a year. Sidewalks and paths throughout the city, there's five recommended projects for roughly eight hundred thousand dollars to maintain sidewalks. And paths, it's, it's, they, they constantly need upkeep, repair. That's thirty thousand dollars a year. So those numbers right there come up to approximately two hu, just short of two hundred thousand of themselves. So recommendations, we recommend, staff recommends city council, you guys approve forty-four of the highest ranked projects. Appropriate six and a half million dollars. Approve four cutoff projects that can then be funded when fun, when the money's become available. When higher rated projects are completed, if there's funding available, that money can then go to these four cutoff projects. We also recommend that six hundred thousand dollars be added to the existing roughly three hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars that's in the contingency account, which will take the account up to nine hundred fifty-four thousand, nine hundred dollars. Which all of this will also leave approximately a little more than half a million dollars in the ending balance account currently. So that's, that's the end of my prepared presentation.
All right, thank you for the presentation. I think this is your first time.
Yes.
Front of the council.
It is.
Great job. Questions from the council?
So I'm not sure if now is the time to ask questions about the list or if we want to hear from others first.
Yeah, we'll take questions now if you have any.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for the overview. As I, I've been going through the list, a couple of questions I had. And is it easier if I refer to the project number? Set, is that how you have it listed?
The one through forty-four number?
No, it's actually, as an example, MV dash zero five.
Yeah, you, that's, yeah, I can follow that way as well.
Okay, good. So just a question on that. That's, the proposal is designed for entire block improvements for San Bernabe between Bartolo Mayo Way and Via Ventura. Investigate widening the roadway and providing walking area. So that, that one is one that the city attorney gave as a, as a potential conflict that I have. It's above five hundred feet, but inside of one thousand feet. I just wanted to ask a question on that. It's fifty thousand dollars. That is for the design and not the work. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, could you give me the number one more time?
So it's project votes, hundred, one oh three, and it's MV dash zero five. Year submitted twenty eighteen.
Design Bernabe.
Yeah, designed for entire block improvements for San Bernabe.
Yeah, I'm going the wrong way. Sorry, thanks. Correct, yes, that's design only.
Okay, so I, I guess the question is, this is a twenty eighteen proposal. That's still waiting for time, personnel and design. So here we are in twenty twenty-three, and I think it's important to review how, how we determine that it should still be on the list versus whether or not it's dropped from the list or if that's an accurate number. So I guess the question is, being that it's been on the list for multiple years, here we sit at fifty thousand for just the design. Is that a current price of estimate design? And has that been under consideration from the NCIP contributing members as it's still a valid project that is still of an interest?
Yes, well, I'll answer the first, the last question. Yes, well, I'll answer the first, the last question first. Yes, it was considered by the NCIP committee. And it would still be valid interest. So if you remember, we had approximately fifty new projects. And then sixty returning projects. So something like the San Bernabe Drive would have been one of those returning projects. That had been on the list, had been approved previously, and then. Because of, you know, various things along with the pandemic, right, those monies were taken back. And now the project is, was, I guess, re-recommended. It went through the entire process. It was recommended and embedded and voted on, and has now been approved. At least for a second time, and right, received a substantial number of votes.
Okay. Great, and, and I think it's just important to call that one out as an example of how there are several projects. That have this rollover effect, as you and the city, city manager indicated before. A lot of these projects, we can't get to until we have staff capacity. I want to go through the list, a couple of other questions, bear with me, council. Question on MN dash eleven, it's project votes. Eighty, I guess, was the number of votes received, project rank twenty eight, MN dash eleven. It is the recreational trail water bottle refill stations with dog, a bowl. It's a twenty nineteen project. It's thirty thousand dollars, and that's to replace what's currently there. So is the condition of what we currently have there in disrepair and no longer functioning? And this is to upgrade what's there, or is this for new and additional locations?
It's to, if my memory is correct, it's to replace the existing fountains, but they don't have. So these fountains would have both, you know, reusable. If you've been to an airport, you know, you've seen those, like they have those refillable water bottle options. Plus, this would also have a side, a lower bowl option for, for pets, dogs, I guess specifically.
Okay, and that is, again, it's a twenty nineteen project. Still valid for the committee and still voted on.
Yes.
At thirty thousand dollars. So it's not increasing the need for water. It's just the.
This would be.
Above ground mechanisms.
Right, it would be replacing existing, it's not new, it's not a new location.
Okay, good. Next question has to do with two that look similar in the same location. DMB dash oh seven, Beachway Boardwalk Extension. That one's new, twenty twenty three. That one is extend the existing beach boardwalk west of Beachway near Tide Avenue. From its current end down to the hard sand of the beach, one hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. But if we go a little bit further, also DMB five. Is a similar Tide Avenue Boardwalk replacement. So I'd like to know the difference between these two projects. How is it connected? They're both a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars.
Correct, so one of these boardwalk projects, if you remember, there were three boardwalk projects that were approved by the committee this year. So, one of them, so DMB zero seven is an extension. So currently, the boardwalk ends just after. Oh, there's a wrong, Long Tide, is it Surfway? It ends. And then it's, it's, it's pretty steep, and then there's a soft sand and goes down to, to, to the water line. So this project is to extend the boardwalk approximately. I don't know, maybe it's fifty feet, fifty to somewhere between fifty and a hundred feet. To take you further down and closer to the, to the water line. The other project, DMB. Which one is it, oh five?
Yeah, oh five.
So the boardwalk parallels Tide Avenue, so as it exists right now, it kind of snakes and parallels Tide Avenue. And this is to essentially replace the entire boardwalk along tide, that, that parallels Tide Avenue.
Okay.
And then the other project that's on here is to replace individual boards.
Okay, so I just wanted to understand that it's two different locations, very close. One is navigating the pathway as you would walk down Surfway. The other one takes off from beach and surf and goes towards the ocean.
Yes.
As a, as a walkway path. And on both of those, what is the life expectancy of a project like that? With the exposure to sand wear and tear, sunlight? What, and you talked about life expectancy of projects and the ongoing maintenance.
Right, so the, the boardwalk, from what I understand, talking with the Parks and Rec staff. I mean, it's, it's somewhere between one and five years. It, it's the board, individual boards maybe, but some parts of it. Get impacted from storm events. So some last longer, it kind of just depends, but. It ca- it, it, yes, they, they do, if it's a rough season, it could experience some pretty significant damage.
Okay, and I don't know if it got to this level, but instead of burnable boards, would we be using? Some manufactured man-made like Trex that could not be hauled away and used for firewood?
We haven't gotten to that level of investigation.
Okay. To continue on, I want to go back one. SK oh five, it's a. S, S K oh five, so it's on. On packet page one forty seven.
Number thirty five.
Yeah. Yeah, project thirty five, S K zero five, okay? Build a separate bicycle path away from the Veterans Drive through the bowl area. So I've never, I've never heard of the bowl area, if you could explain. I don't ride my bike uphill too often, so tell, tell me more.
Uh, I might have to, I might have to call a friend on this one. I haven't ridden it either.
We have, we have lots of friends in the room.
Hello, Tom Hardy from Engineering Department. Yes, there's a, if you go, it's actually. When you go up the hill from Veterans Hall, you make like a U-turn almost at the first corner, then there's a second U-turn.
Okay.
That goes up to Veterans Park, and it's at the second U-turn, if you look to your right, which is, be careful when you do that. But there's an area that's in there, I don't know if it was a quarry before or something, but it's, it's a level with the street. Relatively, and then it, it goes up on the side. So we're talking about putting a bike trail off of the street, going around that second. Ninety or a hundred and eighty degree turn.
Okay.
Just to get the bikes off.
I'll say that.
Through that area.
I've ridden that, and I've seen a lot of bicyclists ride that too, so it is a. It is a dangerous area.
Okay, the bowl area. Well, I just, very short story, the last time I was up there on foot was when. My prior wife was in a foot pursuit chasing somebody.
Oh no.
So I am capable of going uphill. But it was many years ago, and it was on foot, and it was nighttime dark, and I dropped my flashlight, so.
Ed, the question is, did you get him?
Absolutely. Absolutely, with the help of, with the help of my friends who also had a Motorola radio, so. Little sidebar, interesting area, so thank you very much. And I believe my last question has to do with project fifty, MV thirteen. That's, I'll let you get that one up there, project fifty. Five oh.
Five oh, oh, yeah, it did, that's, I have to, yes, go ahead, it's not on this.
Yeah, so it's maybe, maybe off the, the cutoff, so it's after our forty four items.
But that's okay.
Yeah, so conducted traffic study for crosswalk and rectangular rapid flashing beacons. If warranted, construct ADA curb. It's two hundred seventy five thousand dollars, and this is a. Proposed upgrade DG pathway in front of the high school to meet ADA accessory needs. So this was a project brought by a community neighborhood who had concurrence of their neighbors. How does that crosssect with? The potential city projects through Measure S as a future city project? As well as if that is connected to the school. Is that also a possibility that the school, Monterey Peninsula Unified School District? Could assist us if it's dealing with student safety?
Is Andrea on this one? I want a friend, sure.
So you can just kind of get to know where I'm coming from. I don't, I hate to waste taxpayers' money or project money if I can make somebody else pay for it. So I'm wondering about the school district implication.
And just out of memory, because I didn't have number fifty on my list, that's for an always stop study? Or is it for just the?
That's a crosswalk at the high school, behind the high school, actually, up the hill.
Yeah, Herman Drive in El Caminito.
Okay, so that's a good question, because as we talked about the, and Andrea Rennie, Public Works Director, thank you, I'm his friend. And.
So. And my friend too.
Yes. So, yes, we can work with the school, we don't currently have funding for uncontrolled crosswalks. And as you remember the presentation from Andrew. We, we are very careful about any uncontrolled crosswalks that we place in the city, so we want to make sure that they have lighting. Rectangular crossing beacons and, and a high level of safety. So the amount for this project would look at all of these things together. Could we look for safe routes to school opportunities? Yes, however, we're finding that safe routes to school opportunities tend to be much larger projects these days. They're not for smaller projects. So it does make it a little bit more challenging, but we can work with the school. It is one of those. That Measure S would not necessarily put ADA curb ramps in a location that does not have. A current crossing or an uncontrolled crossing at this point.
Good, thank you. And I promise, last question, on packet page one fifty. No particular item, but it's fifty four B all the way down to fifty eight D. There are several question marks there. On the estimated project costs. So is that because it fell so far out of the top forty four? It was not worth the time and effort and the cost to try and get an estimate cost? There's question.
Well, I, I wouldn't say it wasn't worth the time and effort, we just knew we didn't have like eight million dollars. So we put our effort where we knew we were going to have, I guess, the funding available.
Okay.
If you wanted them, we could get those estimates though.
No, I don't, thank you. I just needed, needed to know, know why there was a question mark. Mayor, that's all I had right now.
Alright, questions on this side? Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you, Reggie, for the presentation. Just a couple of questions. So project rank, rank three. Says design only. So that's still accurate, right? This is just to look at the hundred thousand dollars just to design the facility.
Correct.
Okay, and then project rank number four also has design only. And that one's priced at, or, or budgeted at seven hundred thousand. Is that accurate still?
Yes.
Okay, I, and I'm asking specifically for project four, I, I thought I heard a, a conversation about. Making this project be a shovel-ready proj- project.
Correct.
And therefore elevating the, the proposed budget to seven hundred thousand.
Correct, so I can give you a little bit more background. So this covers a pretty extensive road network through the city. It's, the idea is to connect Casanova Oak Knoll. Through Airport Road, through Mark Thomas. Through Slope down to the Recreation Trail. It has to go, I mean, what we're looking at right now involves. Working with Caltrans to. You know, be, we, we would have to encroach into some of Caltrans property. There's a bridge, I guess, that's at Old Salinas Highway that's very narrow. That, that we would need to look at a way to get bikes through that section. So there's some complicated segments along the way. And then we've, we've started looking at some sections of it, and along some other ways, we would have to shift some. Sections of the road as well, so I mean, it's, the design is, is involved. And I understand that seven hundred thousand, the hollers is a big number for, you know, not putting a shovel in the ground. It may not total up to that, but that's, I think it's a very reasonable estimate for what we know right now.
Okay, thank you. Can I ask a follow-up on that real quick? There's that section in between on Mark Thomas, in between Jocelyn Canyon in Santa Catalina. That there is no pedestrian walkway, and I brought this up a couple of years ago. About a potential project, so I'm glad to see that this is, is, would that potentially create a, if this project moves forward? And, and we decided to do some development or construction of that, would that potentially create a pedestrian pathway there?
I believe so, I will, yes, it should, because that's, we're talking about going from, that, that's included in that area, yes.
Okay, okay, awesome.
Well, I, I want to get back to the shovel-ready part of it, though.
Is your mic on? Just want to make sure.
Yeah, I, I think it's on now, yeah.
Yep.
The, the shovel-ready piece that you might have been talking about was that a project that has a design already. Would then be better in a position to qualify for safety grants, state or federal. And that's, and that's your theory, is that if we had this done, then we're much more in a position to qualify. To carry this forward for potential project money.
Yes, that's, that's the plan.
Yeah.
I, I would just share one last thought, since we're on this topic, and, and I'm not an engineer, so I don't want to suggest too much. Because I think you all will figure out the best solution, but I know that highway one is right there, so there's not a lot of space to do stuff on the road. But it could just be a pathway through that land portion up there next to Jocelyn Canyon. That maybe goes down towards Santa Catalina, the entrance of Santa Catalina, so that it can connect to the rest of the. Walkway there, but that's just my two cents from walking that space a lot, so, alright, sorry for stealing your thunder.
Yeah, thank you. Got a lot of thoughts, but I really only have one question, and this is maybe more for members of the committee. When you come up, I'd love to hear your thoughts. So I appreciate that staff is calling attention to maintenance and operation costs, that is important. And obviously, we need to think about it, and you need to think about it. But as I'm looking at some of these projects, and if I'm way off, let me know, but some of these kind of look like. Maintenance and operational cost projects, like maybe for things that were done in the past. I mean, I'm looking at like the Bochi Ball Court. So I, I know, I remember when we funded that, maybe eight years ago or something. So now we're doing a court resurfacing, and you guys are recommending that, that seems like a maintenance cost. And like the boardwalk, I'm guessing that at some time in the past, that probably was an NCIP project. The top lot, I'm pretty sure that was an NCIP project, and so we're doing a resurfacing. And in a way, even fuel research, fuel reduction in the green belts. But I, but I'm still, I do think it's good for us to think about it, and I wonder if you've had conversations about. Maybe just allocating a certain percentage of your funding towards maintenance, or what your thoughts are. I'd really appreciate hearing that. We do need to think about that. There are other things like public safety infrastructure that I really think it's completely appropriate and proper for the general fund. To fund those maintenance projects, there may be other projects where it's more appropriate for NCIP to fund them. So that's really just my question for members of the NCIP. Have you had conversations about this? What are your thoughts? Obviously, it is an important consideration, so thank you very much.
Okay, I wish may I offer, may just a point of clarification, the NCIP does not allocate funding. You allocate funding, the NCIP proposes projects, so just want to clarify that.
Okay, with that, we will go out to public comment, and I believe the, the instructions on that were iterated earlier. But I will just clarify that we ask everybody to identify yourself that wants to speak on public comment upfront. We will capture who those folks are, and then we will close the opportunity for additional folks to want to participate. So now is the time to identify yourself. If you're online, please use the raise hand function. And if you're in person, I ask that you either stand or raise your hand to be identified. And if you're in person, I ask that you either stand or raise your hand to be identified. And it, and it might be easier if you just maybe stand up in line over here, so it's really clear who those folks are. And if you maybe aren't able to stand for too long and you maybe just want to raise your hand for now. Okay, so we have one in the back there. I'll give everybody a second to just. Okay, anybody that's currently sitting that wishes to speak on this item? So we have one here.
We had one in.
And two in the back. I just see the two folks. The individual in the third row here and the individual in the back corner. Anybody else? All right, info online, I'll give you five, four, three, two, one. We'll go ahead and close the public comment or the opportunity for folks to participate in public comment. And we'll start with, uh, in the chambers here, so. All yours. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, okay, so we have, it's the only item. Twelve, how many do we have online? Oh, fifteen, fifteen, I'm not really good at math, fifteen. Okay, so if the council's okay with it, I would request that we extend the public comment period for, for forty-five minutes instead of thirty.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, so go ahead with three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Rick Hoyer, I'm the Chair of the NCIP. I'll actually, I've been to maintenance first, it was on my list to talk about anyway. Your idea of maintenance may not be his idea of maintenance and his idea of maintenance. A lot of the projects and a lot of the costs that are being quoted here for maintenance, the staff, the staff report are projects that we do in the future as well. Uh, if a issue with one of those, yes, it'd be great to have city replacing all of the speed signs and all the rest, but when it comes down to it, the funds aren't there. There's also maintenance on the sports center and all kinds of other facilities that we put funds into, so how do you figure that as well? Reality is, is the boardwalks, we have funded repairs in the past. Uh, when it rises to a level of needing it, it comes to us to fund. And the thing I really take, uh, I have a challenge with is putting a maintenance cost on a design project. Part of the process would be when you're designing it, what's going to be the cost to maintain those different areas as you're doing it? Brought to it, and now are you wanting to build it? So to prejudge a project that you really have no idea what it's going to look like, to me, is a red herring that we don't even need to be talking about at this point. We've talked about maintenance, but again, it's, I, if it rises to the point of a pro, enough of a project, you get the support of the people, we end up funding it and we funded a lot of redos. We've replaced a lot of the, uh, equipment in parks multiple times after they've worn out. So, yes, we all need to be aware of it. We don't want to go crazy with it, but I'm not seeing the same level of detail being put on our projects with a lot of other projects I see in CIP and other stuff as well ongoing. So yes, we need to be careful. I urge you to, uh, go with the staff recommendation and do the list as submitted. Uh, it is in priority order if you're to add things lower than those votes, like the one project you were talking about that did not make the list. Those had less support. So it's really a function of how much support they had, and we had extensive public comment periods and public time and go through in this entire process. So please just move forward with the list, uh, and good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Hoyer.
Hello, Jamie Fields, Del Monte Beach, Nip. Jamie Fields, Del Monte Beach Neighborhood Improvement, Neighborhood and Community Improvement Program, for those that have been around for a while. So I know, I just want to reiterate that every single project on here was reviewed from scratch like it was brand new, um, although there's so much continuity in there that a lot of people remember it from before. And so we've had an opportunity to say, is it still important? So some of these carrybacks were actually doubly evaluated. It was important enough that everybody really wanted it. There's other ones that were probably going to just let them disappear. So this list has been worked on a substantial number of hours, both now and in the past. And, and I want to assure you that you are right. We, we talk about maintenance and we talk about safety. And that's the first thing we talk about in the first meeting of the year before we look at the list to make sure that it makes sense for everybody. So very much a priority. So I would also recommend that you, you, uh, hopefully respect the, the neighborhood. They're really proud the committee is of the work they do. And so supporting them and supporting their list really means a lot to everybody on the committee. But because I'm from Del Monte, I'll just geek out and tell you that pathway over there was built by the developers when they took those apartments into condos around nineteen ninety-five. And so the majority of that path privately put in is actually still there. And NIP has been putting in a, a, a little bit of money almost every year to repair it. And so the reason it's a bigger number this year is because they're saying, you know, maybe it'd be smarter to replace sections of it instead of just doing little repairs. So, so that's why it kind of looks a little bit big. It's not going to be big like that every year. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Council, and Member of NIP, uh, I'm a resident in New Monterey. I've been there for twenty-five years in the peninsula. I looked at the list and what I don't understand is why do you have three projects from Canary Row on that list, which is supposed to be funded by NIP? Talking about a million dollar design for Bath and McHenry Row. I'm talking about also another project, which is four hundred thousand dollars for the bridge over Canary Row. And then improving the shack, worker shack is now two hundred fifty thousand, almost two million dollars. That's money which our neighborhoods, not just New Monterey, where I live, I think, I'm talking about all the neighborhoods, fifteen of them, could use for, um, beefing up the police security. We have a lot more break-ins in our houses than we have ever had before. I would like to see paroles going tonight and make sure we have a safe neighborhood. Yesterday, I went to the Del Monte Beach, and I'll tell you, the beach looks pretty bad. Dead animals anywhere, plastic. I mean, nobody takes care of it, and I had some people out of town that wanted to show them window of the bay, I was proud to show them Monterey, I'm a proud citizen of Monterey, and it really kicked me in the butt when I saw that. So I want to spend the money to clean up our beach, which is the face of the city, which you don't see off the street because you see the window, it looks nice, but once you go over there, you see all the work, the homeless people and everything else. I mean, I don't want to spend the money for that then, and then have the Canary Row business district fund their own projects they have, because that's a business district, they're collecting money from their own businesses for that. So please leave the NIP, and I call NIP for a reason. NCIP community, I guess the C stands for community. Let's put it back the way it was, NIP, because some people might misunderstand the word community. It's neighborhood. That's what it's for, that's how it started, and I would like to maintain it that way. Thank you very much.
Hello, uh, my name is Michael Lang, I am President of Monterey Bay Pickleball Club. Thank you, Members of the Council, for, uh, giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I wanted to, before I get into it, uh, just if the people that are here to support pickleball tonight could just maybe raise your hands just so we can get a idea of the number of people here. I, I, I do that because, uh, we have been working very hard on trying to, really since two thousand eighteen, get new pickleball courts constructed, uh, in the city of Monterey. And, um, you know, with ninety-three projects on your list, um, I think we have quite a bit of showing for our one project here tonight. I wanted to address a little bit the fifty thousand dollar number that was given for operation maintenance for, uh, this project. I think it's quite excessive. On the staff packet, it mentioned four particular items that made up this fifty thousand dollars. I just thought I'd go through and give you my perspective on how that breaks out. The first one was for garbage pickup. Um, I drove by there today, there's already garbage cans out there, so I don't see them being any additional cost for garbage pickup. If you want to put in additional cost for garbage pickup, uh, my estimate, and this is probably high, is four hundred dollars a month or four K per year, or sorry, five K per year. Damaged nets, replacing nets was another one. I looked online today, those are two hundred dollars a piece, uh, generally, and that lasts a long time. But let's just say we replace two per year for ease, uh, that's another half K per year. Cleaning, um, I would actually, um, volunteer, uh, our services, the community services, to take care of cleaning. Uh, it's a general practice, uh, for community members to maintain, uh, uh, the courts, uh, both pickleball and tennis, I think, uh, at other facilities around the, the peninsula. Uh, we have nets, I'm sorry, we have, uh, um, booms hanging from the fences. We have squeegees hanging from the fences, uh, when it rains, we bring out towels, we mop up the courts. Uh, everybody wants to play in safe courts, and so we, we generally maintain a pretty tidy, uh, ship. Um, the last one was this idea of resurfacing, which is obviously the big ticket number. I, I did a little research in general, uh, rules from that I came up with was about thirty K to resurface a court. I'm sorry, to replace, uh, resurface eight courts. So a pickleball court is about a quarter of the size of a tennis court. So we're talking about a facility here that is about the size of the existing Villa Prizo tennis courts. There's two tennis courts out there. Eight pickleball courts is roughly the same size, so I don't want to really blow this out of proportion. You know, this is really not that big of a project, right? We're talking essentially two tennis courts. So resurfacing costs roughly thirty K, I think Villa Prizo was recently done for twenty K if I'm right. Total comes to about fifteen K. Thank you.
Thank you. And I apologize if, uh, when I cut you off, it's not, because I don't want to hear what you have to say, it's, I want to make sure that everybody feels that they have equal amount of time.
Hi, my name is Barbara Lang and I'm his wife. And I just wanted to say I'm an avid pickleball player. I've been playing for about six years and I'm thrilled that NCIP and the council is hopefully approving this project. Um, it has changed my life as far as meeting tons of people, being more healthy. And, um, the one thing I'd like to suggest when you do do design, this is for the design, we understand that, is to consider some kind of restroom, whether it's a porta potty or something like that, because I really do think for the health of the community, playing there, and we play there three, four hours, it would be good to have a bathroom to go to. And I'd like to design to consider it and the cost that it would be, you know, so that's part of maybe one of the designs they make. So I just wanted to say that and, um, wanted to thank you for, for letting us, um, go forward with this. We've been trying for many years, many places have this. And I think there's so many people in this community that are playing pickleball that it, um, is something that I think it's a growing sport, and I'm thrilled that you guys are considering it. Thank you very much.
Oh, there's still two minutes of our time here. Uh, my name is Karen Hinton and I'm a citizen of beautiful Monterey, I love it here. Um, but I'm here tonight to ask you for your help because I am an addict. And I practice my addiction in the community parks around here every single day. I've had the police called on me multiple times. And I want to tell you that I don't do drugs in the park. I don't drink in the park, but I do play pickleball every day in the parks. And I'd like to please, um, ask you to vote for our new pickleball courts at Ryan Ranch, so I can have a safe place to practice my addiction. Thank you.
Always hard to follow a comedian. So entertaining. My name is Michael Kennedy, I'm a resident of Alta Mesa, and, um, I'm a tennis player my whole life. I still play tennis, but three years ago, I discovered pickleball. And I've been playing pickleball more than tennis. And I can see, you know, that this is a, not an either-or type of thing, but, um, uh, a process of, of, uh, working together. I'm delighted that I've been asked to help out with, um, helping to plan for and give input on the NCA project, Ryan Ranch. And, um, I, I do believe that this is a very important project. Monterey, as you, City of Monterey, as you know, has two pickleball courts right now dedicated at Villa Prizo. And, um, the other cities around us have more courts. And oftentimes with, uh, less population, far less population. We need to grow, uh, into, uh, the increasing demand. I don't know how many of you realize the average age of pickleball player nationwide is thirty-eight. And dropping, not fifty plus thirty-eight, and it's dropping all the time. And, um, what's happening is it's, of course, the, 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 uh, pickleball is expanding so quickly, so fast that the starting to, the number of courts that are fixed right now is going to be inappropriate for the number, inadequate for the number of players as this rapidly increasing fastest-growing sport in the nation expands. So I believe that Ryan Ranch is a jewel of a project because it's dedicated pickleball facility in an area that does not have issues with neighbors, which is the vein, as you know, of many other places. And, uh, and so I think that's a real important process. And I think that, uh, it will also attract more people to Monterey. If, like, if we play in PG, the courts over there in Morris Dell, we have lunch at PG. Or if we play in Seaside, we have lunch or dinner there. So I think it's an economic thing as well. And to also realize that if Monterey wants to stay ahead of the curb, in many ways that they are a very progressive city, I think pickleball is one thing that this is kind of like process of planning for its expansion in the future also in Monterey. So I thank you for your input on that, and I emphasize how important I think this project is for the city to move forward. Thank you.
Hi, hi, I'm Doty Freeman and I, uh, I'm a new resident. I moved here from Phoenix, Arizona, a year and a half ago when my husband passed away. And I didn't know anybody here, and I started playing pickleball and tennis in the area. And, uh, I've met all these lovely people through pickleball. And I'm grateful that I had that as a social way of being able to connect with new people in the area. And I hope that we can have more courts out at Ryan Ranch. Thank you.
Hi, Jean Rash, Monterey Vista, NCIP rep and outgoing Vice Chair. Um, I hope you'll, um, assent to the, um, proposition tonight and honor the intense work of the committee and of the staff. And I also join, um, Chair Huwer in hoping that we don't habitually laid in the projects with prejudice on the maintenance, um, and oversight, um, costs. We've never done that before. We can address those with future maintenance projects or even re, rebuilding projects. An example is the Villa Prizo basketball court. It's in need of total repair and restructuring, and that was, uh, one of the most popular projects. And, um, the funds will be allocated to that and we can keep that burden, um, off the general fund. So, um, thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Good evening, Mayor, uh, Council and, uh, city staff. My name is Mark Thomas, I am a United States Pickleball Ambassador, and I have been an avid player in the community for the last eight years. To speak to the average age level, when I started playing, I lined up at Villa Prizo Park, and I was by far the youngest by forty-five years.
Somebody's going to try to say it. Uh-oh. However. Let him keep going. Let him keep going, let him keep.
But what I saw of that was it definitely brought in a sense of community. There was a sense of fellowship. It, pickleball is like no other sport. It's not tennis where just two or four people say, hey, let's meet up at this court and let's play. It's a group gathering, there's socialization, and it's definitely a way to get people out of the house and, and together and doing something active and positive together. Uh, we've been working on trying to build pickleball in Monterey for the last six years. I've had numerous conversations with council members as well as city manager. Uh, we've decided, we went through this process before Ryan Ranch was picked out because it would alleviate some of the issues with any neighborhood concerns, um, with traffic or noise be from all of the, uh, raucous play that we have of hooting and hollering, I believe was one of the quotes. But the biggest thing is this is something that's positive for the community. It's positive for the members here, the, the, of the city of Monterey. And I think moving forward with this project, giving it somewhere that can call it a home. This sport is only growing. Just in this year alone, I've traveled to ten different states at different pickleball tournaments, seeing the age levels go from five-year-olds playing out on the court up to I ref'd a, a match with a ninety-year-old against another ninety-year-old in the singles, and it was phenomenal. It was fun, it wasn't as fast as others, but it was still a great time. And so this sport is only getting bigger. It's easy to play, it's fun to do it. It's fun to do it. If you haven't had a chance, I highly recommend you guys come out and try it. There's any one of us will give you a paddle, come onto the court. You don't even have to say you're a council member. I guarantee you just come to the court. There will be a paddle handed to you regardless of who you are. It's an it's an inviting uh community. And ultimately, it's a phenomenal way to spend your time. And as you see from the uh people behind me that have spoke on it, it's a it's a true passion. So um just want to continue to ask for your support on this and uh from that, thank you.
Do we get a handicap in week like now?
All right, we'll take it online.
All right, first I'm calling on Mr. Rosello.
Good evening, uh Mayor and City Council, Richard Rosello, President of the Casanova Oakno Neighborhood Association. I'd just like to explain trials and tribulation, the separated bike paths. Uh when Andrea showed me the plans for North Fremont Street, it kind of shocked me with the bike lane in the middle. But having ridden that street with a bike, there are over a hundred conflict points, which is death for a dr- uh bike rider, driveways, intersections, turn areas, parked cars. All of those are threats to bike riders. So I enthusiastically supported sponsoring the design of North Fremont through NCIP. Uh the neighborhood concurred, NCIP concurred, and that three hundred and fifty thousand resulted in a ten million dollar state grant. We also sponsored the gap project design. And then we started looking at how to get to the rec trail. When a neighbor got broadsided and totaled their vehicle on Cassaverty, I counted the dozens of conflict points from intersections to apartment driveways, to house driveways. It is awful on Cassaverty, dozens of conflict points. On Mark Thomas, we have two existing three foot bike lanes. We eliminate those. There's a three foot gap between the freeway fence and the curb. You add that distance to that three feet, you have a nine foot wide a bike way without changing the street. Remember that street is used now, that bridge is used now. The speeds are well over fifty miles an hour. It is death for bike riders. It is death for pedestrians walking in the gutter. So that's when Jeff Krebs came up with the idea of going down to slope and then going down to Del Monte and crossing to the rec trail. There are two conflict points, both entrances to MPS. One is only used now. So there's one conflict point. Crossing Del Monte is a lighted intersection with a crosswalk. So that's why we came up with that design. We needed shovel ready if we want to be in front of the line to get the grant. And safe routes to school, state grants and federal grants, pedestrian grants. We've got to stop the pedestrian and the bike fatalities in the city of Monterey. And this is a project that I would like to see completed. Thank you for going through the list tonight and I appreciate all the comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And next there is a telephone caller that I see how, having joined us twice. So if one doesn't work, I'll try the other. Telephone caller ending in two zero four, could you um unmute? Okay, I'm going to try the other instance of this person. All right, telephone caller, can you unmute now, please? Go ahead, please.
Yes, good evening, uh Tom Rowley calling. Just wanted to say I support everything uh Chair Hoyer had to say. Uh he nailed it. And uh the comments by uh uh Mr. Rosello about the uh bike lane project is actually actually really on point. It needs to be done. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you. And we have one last speaker, that is Esther.
Good evening. Esther Malcolm, President of Laguna Grande Neighborhood Association. Um first and foremost, I want to thank all of the NCIP committee members for the countless hours that they put into doing this work. Um I don't know if if people that are in the community realize how much time they put into this. And we all really owe them a lot of appreciation and gratitude for that. Um I'm going to remind um our traffic engineer that when we discussed the bike lane to nowhere connecting to the rec trail, the first thing that we brought up back then was the Casa Verde was not a good connection. And clearly, you know, it's it's been proven now. So I agree with what Richard was just stating. Um it's way overdue. If we had been listened to years ago, it would already, you know, be that much more ahead of of in the process. Um I also wanted to mention that um the boardwalk on uh in the Del Monte Beach is used a lot. And you know, we do need to make sure that that is, you know, in tip top shape at all times. Um I I do, you know, I've always had a problem with NCIP, with NIP being um treated as a bank for the city um for whenever they needed to come and get some money. And you know, with the pandemic, that was an exception. And I don't think anybody had a problem with that. But I still feel like there are a number of things that are asked of NCIP of the city that should be the city's responsibility. If the community was built without a sidewalk, that's the city's expense. It shouldn't be coming out of an NCIP budget. A community should have sidewalks. That that it just doesn't make sense. But overall, you know, I do, my main point tonight is really that I want to thank these guys because I know my own NCIP rep, Scott Hansen, puts in a lot, a lot of time on this. And I I for one am very um grateful for the work that they do. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes our Zoom comment.
Awesome. Well, I appreciate everybody's public comments. And with that, we'll bring it back to the council for deliberation and a motion. Who would like to start us off? Councilman Garcia.
Thank you. Uh I think I want to start with an acknowledgement. Um somewhat echoing what our last caller just said, Esther. Um I I've been tuning into uh NCIP meetings for uh for a few years now and kind of followed a few projects here and there. Um but now um you know, have the uh the privilege of really looking and 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 understanding in a little bit more detailed way how NCIP works and and who's developing this list. Um and and the projects, the awesome projects that are coming out of uh this committee. Um so an acknowledgement to uh of course, Reg- Reggie for presenting tonight. But I know Tom has been involved for a few years. And uh Rick um also uh great leadership. And then of course, all the committee members who have put a lot of time, lot of hours into figuring out what uh they would like to see um in their neighborhoods. And and not only that, but uh as improvements for the whole city. So uh I think it's important to to recognize that and really elevate that because uh it's not an easy process. It takes a lot of time, a lot of dedication. And and I personally appreciate that uh because also as a resident of Monterey, I have felt the impact of those those projects. So there you go. And I I acknowledgement. So thank you. Thank you for the work you do. Um I had a um great conversation with uh Rick a few days ago. Thank you for taking the time and and you know, uh talking about just overall process. Um and I, what I walked away with from that conversation was that um I I don't want to touch the list as it stands because again, a lot of work has gone into it. There is an item that I'm going to share in a little bit, which I I'm just going to put out there and see if there's appetite for maybe a revision. But in terms of the uh entire list, um I mean, I I think the whole list is is just great projects. Hopefully, all of them get funded one day. Um but to start, the uh top uh forty four, um I I think they're, you know, there were they, were they deserved to be. Um pickleball, I personally don't play. I'm not too familiar with it. But after tonight's advocacy and what I've heard outside of this meeting, maybe I'll give it a shot. I don't know. Um and 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 all those projects that really encourage uh uh more healthier, active lifestyle. Uh I mean, that's, it's important. It's an investment in our community so that our residents are healthy physically and also healthy here and here. So um just for those reasons, I think they're they're worth pushing forward. Um Mark Thomas Drive, we've been waiting for that. Um I think uh our our um uh uh speaker uh online. Um and actually, now that I'm I mentioned online, I know that there's some uh committee members, NCIP committee members online, I think as well. So I want to make sure they get acknowledged as well. But um as uh Richard was uh mentioning earlier, I mean, it's that whole stretch of Mark Thomas Drive has such a great potential to create that extension um from uh North Fremont into other areas of of our city. So I'm really excited about seeing that project and really excited to see what what comes of that. And and hopefully, in in a in a timely uh manner, knowing the challenges that we also face. Um the uh the item that I wanted to put out into the universe and see if there's an appetite to kind of uh rethink its ranking is the um, here, let me look it up here. Uh that I had it here, but um where is it? Oh, that's why I can't find it.
How far off the cutoff is?
Yeah, I think it's like uh it's it's down there.
Uh do you know the the area? He can, staff can find it for you.
Yeah, I I got it here. So it's a project ranked sixty eight. And that's uh C O K dash uh zero five. Um yeah, and and I bring this item up just because um I I've heard a lot of concern about uh this specific issue uh at this specific intersection over at Fremont and and Ramona. And and the concern seems to be growing, especially as we move a little bit closer into winter. And with the information that we're getting about possible heavy storm, um rainstorms coming up. Um I don't know, maybe there's an opportunity to uh maybe not bring it up to the very top, but at least in the uh top forty four. Um but I'll just, you know, put it out there and see, see what the appetite is. Um and then the last item that I wanted to share um in and I want, I want to be careful how I phrase this because um I I don't, definitely don't mean this as a criticism, but but more of a observation. And and what I'm about to say might already be happening, I don't know. Um but something that I really appreciate about NCIP is that it's it's very similar to a um participatory budgeting process where community is really taking that ownership of their neighborhoods and making decisions of where funds will be spent to to make improvements. Now, I say it's similar because um I I may, and maybe this is where my gap of knowledge is. Um I think um there could be a process where um more community is involved in the final decisions of each of the projects and ultimately the uh the list of projects. Um and again, that might be happening, I don't know. Uh but if it's not, I think it's worthwhile uh thinking about what those other um mechanisms could be to engage more residents, be like community meetings or um charades or or I I mean, there's a number of of opportunities outside of the normal NCIP committee meetings where where folks have the opportunity to do uh public comment. Um it's really important for me to uh meet community where they are. Sometimes, community can't necessarily make a scheduled meeting because of work, because of childcare. You know, the the reasons, you know, could be many. Um so finding those opportunities where this information can be relayed more to to uh our neighbors, um that to me, I think would bring um uh higher value to the list just because I think it would be um maybe even more reflective. The list would be more reflective of what our residents need and and want. Um but I'm just going to leave it at that. And uh again, the acknowledgement, thank you so much for for the time you you spent, you invested in this and and for your work.
Councilor Hafa. Yeah, first of all, thank you, committee members, for all of your hard work. Um haven't had a chance to personally thank all of you, but I do appreciate the work that you all do. Um um first of all, I I'm supportive of the recommendation as it is. I do hear a couple of ideas about other projects that didn't make the list. But I mean, I think there'll be an opportunity next year for those projects again to to be heard. So um yeah, I'm I'm comfortable with the list as it is. I appreciate the emphasis on public safety and fire safety. And fire safety in particular is really, really a serious issue for the city of Monterey. So appreciate you making that a priority. Appreciate the emphasis on parks and recreation. Um as Councilmember Gino said, that's so important for the health of our community. Um I'm supportive of the pickleball court and uh I am ready to go out and try it. I'm kind of dealing, as you know, with the health issue. So I'm not at my full capacity yet, but I'm ready to get out there and compete and uh see what that's all about. We've been actually, we've heard about pickleball. I swear it's been ten years now. It's been a challenge, you know? It's really exciting that we finally have located a space where pickleball players can play without being in conflict or, you know, tension with um other neighbors. So I just think that's huge. Um I am especially and personally grateful for your interest in bike and pedestrian safety. And Richard, if you're still listening, thank you so much for advocating for that. Um as somebody who bikes a lot, uh it's important. We really don't have the infrastructure and painted lines don't make it safe. You know, separated paths are the only way you're going to really make a lot of folks who right now maybe would like to get on a bike, um but don't feel safe, kids, families. Um so yeah, that's that's huge. I'm just really excited to see that project brought forward and for us to start to kind of fit together the pieces and the gaps in our um bike and pedestrian infrastructure. So I don't really have anything else to say. Uh thank you. I'm supportive of the recommendation.
Councilor Smith?
Yeah, thank you. Um I'm not sure that I want to play the guy that challenged nine year old to pickleball. And uh my eyes work pretty well, so if I play him, I need a handicap. Um yes, I want to say thank you for all the you in the NCIP uh that that have worked so hard because we know the number of meetings. We, we do watch the process and this year, as in the last couple of years, process has been, I think, speeded up and increased in its efficient efficiency because the invention of the paddle and, and all of that. So we appreciate how much you have studied and put into this with your time and your efforts in talking to your neighbors. I wanted to acknowledge the, the process includes, and it hasn't changed that much since its invention in nineteen eighty-five. But the process really includes an element that is hard to describe. And some of us went to Lee, California cities and was talking to another councilman and talking about the unique things of our two different cities. And I explained the NCIP and the processes going on and we'll be hearing the list and the cutoff and, you know, all the voting in. And I got blank stares. It was like, huh? You, you let them do what? It's a concept that is not anywhere else in the state of California. It, it is by design, and I think it works out this way, that it pushes the city council to acknowledge what's important to the community. And we can't do that, the five of us, unless you put that in front of us and you do the work behind the scenes. That gives us the ability to say that this is a unique city with a very unique program that's been here since nineteen eighty-five. That is truly all about community because of the mechanism, the way it's put together and the rigors of the legal staff, your ideas coming together with the vote of the power of your neighborhoods. It's a tremendously unique program that affords some tension, some collaboration that's not always agreeable among communities, neighborhood associations. However, at the end of the day, it gets there. And I don't know of any other way to get here if we said NCIP didn't exist and we were going to do this in the budget process. I just don't think that would work. So wholeheartedly a supporter and acknowledging your time, your effort. And I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge the nineteen eighty-five date of Rich Ruchello and Clive Roberson and Rick Hoyer and others. Those three are standouts that continue to contribute and lead. So for those of you that came in after them, continue to help and serve, step into leadership roles, continue to work at this because this is what makes your community what it is that would not be this way without you. So please keep that up. I wanted to point out a couple of things, the process and the rigors of this. So this is my third term, nine years, and I don't know but one occasion that I've ever said we should modify the list and remove something. So I, I support the list. This is a process that you've gone through and I, I want to honor that process. I had some questions. They were answered and I appreciate that. I support the forty-four list and, and the forty-four items on the list that I know that come under the dollar, dollar amount that's your goal. The only downside of this entire process is we're twelve million, nine hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars short of saying a unanimous yes to everything. So we're, we're, you know, more than, more than further along to celebrate forty-four projects with seven million, one hundred and ten thousand dollars for the program appropriation. We know that forty-four won't exist because we know history tells us. We have a cutoff list because some of those forty-four will fall off because they're not practical or there's a change or we have to wait. So we know that there's hope for some of them beyond forty-four in time. But I just wanted to say that if we always got what we wanted, we would be spoiled rotten kids and we would not be appreciative of what we do have. One other thing I wanted to say, there's some projects that are on here that some comments were, well, why are we doing that? And there's some other worthy things that should be addressed instead of this or that. It's all about the vote, like everything else in a representative government. The process, it says, which one do you like? Which ones do you choose? Which one are you willing to compromise on? How can we convince you to drop your idea and take my idea because there's a better one? At the end of the day, this is what NCIP voted on. And that's why it's so easy to support it and not meddle with your priorities. And I won't do that. That's the only comment I have. Thank you very much. And one additional kudos. Tom, thank you. Andrea, thank you in the future. I know the lion's share of this stuff's going to land in your department. Thank you ahead of time. For other staff members, city directors and leaders, we appreciate what you do in support of NCIP and getting the delivery of these projects. And to our presenter tonight, outstanding job. I made up some questions just to test you. No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. Very excellent job tonight and as always representing the community and NCIP. We very much appreciate you coming on board and accepting this job. And we look forward to a very long relationship in your employment here. Thank you for coming. Thank you all for everything you do and I'm ready to pass it on to the mayor and maybe there's a vote coming.
All right. So first I want to say, when is pickleball going to be part of the Olympics? It's going to be soon. I, I feel it. It's going to be soon. No, but I, I echo my colleagues in giving appreciation to the NCIP. I know more now after having had conversations with the neighborhood presidents, with members of the NCIP, past and present, how much work really goes in to it behind the scenes and having to deal with the administrative piece of it, that's kind of the headache part that nobody really wants to deal with. You're doing it. And so I don't want to belabor the point, but I kind of do because it deserves the recognition. So this might sound a little bit cheesy, but some of you identified yourselves as being NCIP members. Can I just ask for those that are currently or in the past have ever served on the NCIP? Could you just stand and be recognized? I know there's folks online too. But for those in the room, would you just stand and be recognized real quick? And just give a little bit of love to these folks. The value of showing up in person, right? The N C I. That's right. It makes it easier, right? What I think makes the, the NCIP great is the focus on our parks, on our streets, on our sidewalks, on walking paths, on bicycle paths. I mean, this is like true local stuff. This is about taking care of one another. It's about the physical fitness, the mental health, the relationships. This is what we're here for. And so, you know, I, I love looking at the various projects that are being proposed. And all of these products are great. The ones that made the cut, the ones that didn't make the cut. They're all good projects and, and to council member Smith's point, you know, I wish that we had the funding to support all of these things. But that's the challenge of the budgetary process. Okay. So now that I've done the niceties, I, I don't want to put a cold blanket on this conversation, but I, something needs to be said. There, ever since I've been involved in Monterey City politics, there has always been an issue with the NCIP in regards to the city's ability to be able to accomplish these projects. And so getting to the pandemic when, and, and for those that aren't fully familiar, the city took the funds out of the NCIP and it wasn't just the funding for the allocation of that year, but it was for all of the funding for the projects that had already been allocated for years into the past. So we took all those funds in order to try to balance the budget when the city lost revenue during the pandemic. And so we profusely thanked the members of the NCIP because they're doing a lot of work in the background to propose these projects, vet them for us to then take the funding. It's like all their work went to naught. But again, I want to reiterate that there was projects in the pipeline that had been sitting there for fifteen plus years and hadn't had anything done to them. And so that's, that's my concern. It's not that I don't think we should be doing these things, but it's how do we get these things done? And if history shows us anything, it shows that we haven't been able to do it. And so I don't know how we have that conversation so that we're not just talking about it and that we're actually doing something about addressing this issue. One of the things that I heard is maybe we look at not doing a lot of small projects, maybe we focus on bigger projects. I don't want to sit here and, and go too deep into what the future looks like. I think my point in this is that we need to look at what this is. My fear is we're all enthusiastic tonight about all these cool and interesting projects. Are they going to get done? That's, I, I, the, the idea phase is really exciting. But it means nothing when two or three years from now, the projects that you're sitting here in front of us advocating for aren't getting done. So I just want to be clear and transparent about recognizing the trend in the history and then recognizing what we do, need to do to move forward. So my hope is, is that there's conversations with the neighborhood associations, with the NCIP and the council around how do we find a, a, a solution towards figuring this out? I do want to share another thought, which is this conversation around the maintenance. And I, I almost don't want to go into this because again, I think we need to figure out what the future looks like, but my concern is, is that there is projects that have been constructed in the city of Monterey that came from the NCIP that aren't being maintained. And, and I hear the comments that, well, if it's important to the NCIP, they're going to put it on it. The basketball court is an example of that. Part of it is, should we leave it to the NCIP to do it? I'm thinking of the, the dog park that's next to the cemetery. You know, it's not, it's not a good location. I, I, I don't think, but it, you know, it's not well maintained. And I'm not, I'm not going to sit here and point the finger at the NCIP. We're trying to get projects done. But so how can you do any new projects when you have all these past projects? And are, are, is the NCIP sitting here and evaluating every single project and checking the maintenance status of it? It just seems that something needs to happen that if we're going to approve a project that we look at what the maintenance schedule looks like and that has to be incorporated in some kind of program. We're not going to just let something sit that we shouldn't, in my opinion, let something sit there and just be overgrown because now it's, it's fallen to the wayside. It's not a priority. The city has to take care of that. We're responsible for maintaining the infrastructure within the city. So I don't know the perfect solution to that. I'm only raising this to say that we shouldn't just let the conversation die and say, let's just let the NCIP figure it out. I don't think that's fair on the city and I don't think it's fair to the NCIP committee. So I, I think that let's just kind of pick up that conversation. I agree with my colleagues. I support the, 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 the projects that have been proposed. Again, thank you to all the NCIP members and all the community members that have engaged in this project and the process. And with that, I will entertain a motion.
I will move to approve the staff recommendation.
Second, second. Okay. So moving second, any other comments?
Yeah, just a comment. I, I think we all recognize the, the concern that we have. It's been stated a couple of times about ongoing maintenance. I think that we need to remember that there is a a ballot measure that was voted by the people and it's described in a legal manner as it's capital improvement projects. It does, does not include a provision in the ordinance as it exists right now to take on the maintenance pieces. But there's certainly, you know, some ideas floating around out there. But in, in no way do I want to undermine or change the, the will of the voters in nineteen eighty-five. But there's certainly an acknowledgement that we need to pay attention to the other side of the coin in terms of how, how we balance the ongoing maintenance and how we continue to stay focused. And as has been pointed out, there's a lot of these projects that the city capital improvement probably couldn't have gotten done. And so we have to acknowledge that there's a balance, there's a relationship, there's give and take. And there, there has to continue to be the spirit of the floating ideas that, yeah, sometimes there's tension in the room about it. But I think that's how we come up with the best projects and the best collaborative effort between the process of the NCIP and the city side of, you know, making sure that we staff through the general fund, the maintenance. So there'll be an opportunity to talk about more ideas in the future.
For sure. And, and just to be clear, I wasn't saying that we use the NCIP, I, I acknowledging the point there, right? And, and the, and the challenges, just raising the fact that we need to continue that conversation.
Yeah.
Alrighty. Anything on the side? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Uh, council comments. Who wants to start us off?
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. So just wanted to share a couple of things, last regular council meeting.
Why don't you hold on until the room gets cleared here?
Thanks, everybody.
Have a good night.
Goodnight, Lee.
Alrighty. So just wanted to share a couple of points. Last regular council meeting, I was not present because I was attending a clean mobility forum down in, in Los Angeles. And, and what it was, it was a one-day conference, basically where agencies from throughout the state came together coordinated by the California Climate Investments, California Air Resources Board in California Energy, Energy Commission. Brought all these agencies together, just basically as, as a way to share strategies, best practices in, in terms of the implementation of micro-mobility, implementation of bike infrastructure, pedestrian infrastructure. And it was just a great opportunity to learn about what other communities, some similar to ours, others not. What they're doing to, to further this type of infrastructure. And we, we know that funding is always a challenge. So I walked away with a couple of nuggets that I'm hoping to share with city staff sometime soon when I get around to writing it down. So just wanted to share that. And then also, let's see. I attended the waterfront lot ribbon cutting, which was very exciting. Thank you so much for all the work that went into that. I rode, I rode my bike to it and rode for the first time the bike path there that stretches through the parking lot. And it felt really comfortable. It looks way more open. Visibility was great. It was a beautiful day. Public Works even coordinated the jets flying in the background. So it was amazing. Yeah. So, yeah, it was an awesome event and, and acknowledgement to the team for all the great work that was done there. And then last, actually Mayor Tyler and myself attended the Laguna Grande picnic, as was mentioned by Esther earlier and had a great time there as well, just meeting residents and just having a, a great barbecue on, on a weekend. Karen was there with Park. So it was great to just have everyone there and, and just talk a little bit about what the concerns are for, for the neighborhood, but also try to enjoy that community that we continue to try to build and, and maintain. So thank you, Esther and folks from Laguna Grande for organizing that. And I had a great time and that's all I have. Thank you.
Perfect. Councilor Hafa?
Yeah. So a lot of things going on. Enjoyed an evening with the end. Enjoyed an evening with the NAACP where the mayor presided and did a great job. Recently attended annual meeting of the ACLU. Where they honored Regina Mason for her work on civil rights and the village. Work that she does with the Village Project. Attended the Monterey Bay Waterman, Water Management District Meeting. And spoke in favor of them moving forward with their Measure J. Initiative, which is the public water ownership of our water district. I just want to say one thing, which is, and I know Councilmember Ed, you're a big proponent of making sure we get the water we need to do. The projects we need to house our people and allow our businesses to thrive and a hundred percent agree. You know, one of the reasons I think public water ownership will help us to that end is. You know, in the end, we probably are gonna need a D cell, but I just am not convinced that the private water company has the. Support of the public in order to get that done. So in any case, spoke there. We also have coming up on November fourth at two P M, the Schuman Hart House, uh, open house. So that's gonna be a shelter for women and families that are unhoused. Uh, it's located on six hundred East Franklin Street and the community is invited. So that's Saturday, November fourth, uh, two to four P M, Schuman Hart House. Uh, it's the first shelter in Monterey dedicated to women and families. Uh, and I was sorry to miss the Wharf Anniversary Party. I had another event at the same time, but, um. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Smith?
Not only did you miss the Wharf. Birthday party, you missed the money man.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, yeah, they played at my daughter's wedding. They were awesome. So this last week, look back for council time. Attended the Wharf Business Association Meeting, uh, which was on the fourth Zoom meeting. So I've cleared up some conflicts on Wednesday, so I'll be able to start attending those monthly. Wharf Association Business Meetings. Tyler, you were there at the front end of the meeting. So I'll be continuing to attend those meetings on a monthly basis. Attended the Marina Ribbon Cutting, uh, which was a, a great, great day, as is mentioned. Airshow above and nice weather. And I did ride my bike. And, and I've been riding my bike down there as the project has been progressing. Sometimes through the construction site with some people looking at me saying, what the heck, who is that and why are you riding your bike through? Pottles and tractors, but I had fun, uh, four wheel driving through there on my bicycle. Uh, so you know, a massive project, great staff support, oodles and oodles of time. Lots of conflicts, uh, turned out great. And so thank you for all the staff members. That hear this. We appreciated all your efforts in doing that. Appreciated the show and tell with all the equipment and the machinery and the members of the public coming out. So that's, that's always fun. Uh, there's a couple of things coming up that I want to throw out there. Last Monday also, I attended the MST Board Meeting as well. The Western Flyer is November fourth. And city manager, do you know the time of arrival and the?
Twelve, I have twelve thirty in my calendar.
Okay, so twelve, twelve thirty. So maybe we can do the Western Flyer and then get over to the ribbon cutting for the Schuman House.
Don't celebrate too much there.
I'm sorry?
Don't celebrate too much on the Western Flyer if you have another event later.
Yeah. So Western Flyer, November fourth, so plan on that. The project is, is turning out great. The ship is beautiful. The Canary Row Rotary Club, which I'm a board member and past president. Each year there is a. President's event and this year we are proud to support. An Evening of Hope, October twenty-fifth, four P M to seven. At CSU and B Otter Student Union at the campus. We are in a partnership with Monterey County Sustainable Communities for Sustainability, Monterey County. And we've invited a keynote speaker, Paul Hawken. Who is going to address, can we end the climate crisis in one generation? Uh, an author speaker. Uh, there's still a few tickets available on the website. Of the Communities for Sustainability Monterey County. So visit that site if you're interested in the tickets. I think they're reasonable, like forty bucks. So it's an evening of hope. So looking forward to doing that with the Rotary Club. And members of CSU and B and Monterey County Communities for Sustainability. I think like I've covered all the events. Uh, there's one other event that I wanted to highlight. City Manager, can you help me with the date? That's the Fire Department Parks and Recreation, uh, movie in the park. And do you know the date?
You, you're taking my thunder away, Councilmember. These are council comments.
I wanted to make sure, cause you didn't say it was on your list. We'll, we'll wait.
I have a full program on this one.
Full program. Mayor, that's all I have for council comments. I've been told that's it for me.
Oh, my gosh, that's hilarious. Alright, so waterfront parking lot. I, I learned my lesson to not wear a suit when it's like ninety degrees out. But it was a good event and thanks for everybody that came to that. And to the team for all the work that went into, to making that happen. I have had a couple of opportunities to ride that new bike path. And I'll tell you, when we were approving that on the council, when we were originally approving that on the council. And Andrea was talking about how they were moving the bike path. I was looking at it and I was like, I don't, oh, I'm not seeing it. I'm not. But now that it's there and I've had an opportunity to ride it. They do, it elevates the bike path, so it's easier to see pedestrians and, and bicycles. There are less touch points and, and, and potential for interactions with vehicles. So I think it's ended up being a great design and there's other elements of it that I won't. Iterate right now, but. It was a good event and I appreciate everybody that was a part of that. The Wharf Birthday was a good event and appreciate Ed for, for showing up to that. I surprisingly somehow got a, a picture of myself cutting the cake and, and, and laughing hysterically in the Herald. But it was always a good event and the Wharf and the history associated with it is great. I mean, I just encourage folks to go to Old Fisherman's Wharf's website and just look at their history tab. Um, and just understand how core and essential the Wharf is to the city of Monterey. And pretty much the entire area, that entire region. The harbor and, and how that was just established and developed around the Wharf. The picnics, I did attend the Laguna Grande picnic and the Villa de Monte picnic, which was this past weekend. So I appreciate the work that our neighborhood associations are doing to help bring the community together. This Friday at four, there's the police promotion and swearing in ceremony. So encourage folks to come and attend that and show some love and support to. Those getting a promotion and, and newly sworn in officers. For those that live in Old Town, and I think it's only for those that live in Old Town. There is the annual party on the first of October. I won't even tell you where it's at. Oh, thank you, November.
Perry House.
Not supposed to say.
Well, if, if we're gonna be there, we need to say it's transparent.
You have to get tickets, so don't just show up. Um, you have to have tickets to, to walk in there. And then, yes, the Western Flyer, um, there's a few of us that will be. Actually riding the boat from Moss Landing down to Monterey. So super excited to be a part of that experience. And for those that don't have awareness, like don't fully know about the Western Flyer. It is a fishing boat that Steinbeck and Ed Ricketts. Used to explore. To do some exploration. See, Cortez, uh, see, no, it's the Gulf of, well, yeah, Gulf of California. So in CEO Cortez, uh, the book. So really great history there and the fact that there's already that established histories here in the city of Monterey. Just really thankful to the foundation for the work they're doing for that. And so just encourage folks that if you're here in town to join us at twelve thirty on, uh, on November fourth, I'm gonna say October again. For that event. Alright, with that, I will pass it to Hans and hopefully we've left something for you to, to share, so.
I, I will try my best. Uh, we have a new app that we will announce appropriately soon. It will accompany the experience on the path of history. Uh, our library director will make the honors of announcing that soon. This Friday, we have, uh, Daniel Summerhill in the library, a poet. Who, who will share some of his work with folks there. And also this week, we will launch our fall issue for the City Focus. So stand by in your email inboxes. I want you to please also note that on Wednesday, December sixth, Wednesday, December sixth. We will have our traditional boards and commission holiday receptions. It's Wednesday, uh, December sixth.
Can you put that in the Friday?
Yes, it will be at the Marriott Ferrante Room from five thirty to seven thirty. This Saturday, uh, we will be celebrating Halloween on Pacific Street. Uh, we'll block off between Franklin, uh, between Jefferson and Madison Street. And will be trunk or treat. Uh, several city departments will be participating as well as. Other nonprofits such as My Museum, uh, Ohana. We just recruited Blue Zones. Um, who else who am I missing there? Let me see. That these are all the city departments, city departments will be, community development will be there, parks and recreation, sports center, Monterey Conference Center. As well as I believe, police and fire. And then it will, it will be going on between five to six thirty. And then at seven o'clock, we will enjoy a movie in front of Colton Hall. Uh, it is a Halloween movie. My selection wasn't selected. Instead, they selected the movie Chris, The Nightmare Before Christmas. Uh, so which is a Halloween movie despite. That will be October twenty-first, this Saturday. Uh, on in front of Colton Hall, first starting on the tree, on the street with trunk or treat. And then the movie in the park will be The Nightmare Before Christmas and I.
It's a PG movie. It's, it's a good movie, Hans.
That you can watch.
Yeah, yeah. So I had no Halloween or something like that movie, but I don't think that was appropriate.
Mayor, could I add something to the calendar that he prompted me?
Okay.
It would be appropriate. The Fisherman's Wharf Association for the last many years. On Halloween night, the thirty-first, will be decorating the Wharf and welcoming families and children. For candy giveaway. Lots and lots and lots of candy. So. Dress up. Adults frequently dress up with their children and go down and get a bunch of candy and visit the merchants on Fisherman's Wharf. Uh, that starts relatively early, so the younger children can make that event and then come up and watch the movie night. So that's the, the Halloween night, thirty-first.
Everything is held top secret, uh, even though I tried to figure out who does what. It's just a, a very top secret thing and then everyone surprises everyone with the themes. It's, it's really hilarious and there's a lot of creativity going in there. And I will just want to say that the city manager office's turn is now to win the competition. So this year, I hope we will win.
See, now the thing is, is that if the council could only collaborate on something like this, this is, this isn't a policy decision. We're not breaking ground. I could really, could we like secretly plan to show up and, and matching? I just, I gotta say that it is the most impressive, like showing, uh, like. Okay. This could be dangerous. Alright, what time, what, what time on the thirty-first?
It's like nine o'clock, isn't it?
We'll have, um, uh, I think two or three judges there. Usually Lori Welga is our judge, but she will be not in the country at that time. So we have three new judges there.
When you win without Lori?
No, Lori never was part of, of our team because she was always a judge and that's why we always lost. That's my theory. And I stand by that. I stand by that.
I, I, I'll just, uh, well, maybe we can. No, I'm just kidding. Now that this is a public meeting, I'm just gonna share with the public that we don't ever, you usually ever go on like this. But we don't ever really usually end this early either. So it's like, we feel like we have more time. And I don't think I've ever seen this many folks in the public, even though there's not that many of you here, stay this long. Um, into council comments and, and city manager comments. So thank you for those that decided to stay with us. What is mom? So it kinda doesn't count.
She'd like to go home.
Alright, and with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you.